Where am I? Okay, good morning. The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for January 28, 2025 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys, or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Oh, no, I can't see the bottom of the screen, sorry. I can't, sorry, I can't see the, like, bottom. I'm just missing the last line. Don't ask me why. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Mr. Stenbridge.
Madam Chair, President.
Morning. Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning, Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning, Mr. Collins. Are you on mute? Okay, Ms. Panado.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning. Is Mr. Collins with us? Okay, well, we'll begin as a six-member board, but I think he's just running late. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes, Madam Chair. Good morning, folks. We'll start with the extensions scheduled for 9:30 a.m. I will read all of them in at once. They have been deemed to be reasonable. And if we have any questions, you can ask those of the chair, and we'll move on from there. First, we have case BOA 1423055 with the address of 572 to 574 Columbia Road. Next, we have case BZC 29846 with the address of 1954 Commonwealth Avenue. Next is case BOA 11398531 with the address of 30 Leo Birmingham, Birmingham Road, I believe, that's. Next, we have case BOA 1280543 with the address of 190 to 192 Dudley Street. Then we have case BOA 1299109 with the address of 252 Sharmut Avenue. Next, we have case BOA 824480 with the address of 127 Amy Street. And finally, we have case BOA 1102209 with the address of 99105 Fairmont Avenue.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, but we have a motion to grant the extensions as requested.
I make a motion to grant the extensions as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Is Mr. Collins on? Okay, Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we have, move on to the recommendations scheduled for 9:30 a.m. I will read all of these. These were from the subcommittee of last Thursday, the 23rd. All of them were approved. I will read them in, and then we'll ask for motion. Start off with case BOA 1660267 with the address of 305 to 307 Meridian Street. Again, was approved. Case, next is case BOA 1599811 with the address of 657 East Fifth Street, was approved. Then we have case BOA 1654426 with the address of 139 Beach Street, which was approved. Then we have case BOA 1674592 with the address of 121 Harvard Avenue, which was approved. Then we have case BOA 1662652 with the address of 10 to 12 Bagnon Street. Next, we have case BOA 1673742 with the address of 64 Edna Street. And finally, we have case BOA 1613879 with the address of 43 to 45 Wood Avenue, which was all, which that and the previous one were also approved.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we move on to the hearings scheduled for 9:30 a.m. Before we begin, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals, deferrals from the 9:30 a.m. hearings.
Yes, 639 to 643 Warren Street, Mr. Secretary. It's middle of the fifth page.
Sorry, that was for 9:30? Oh, I, oh, God.
Yes, sir.
That would be for case, thank you, that would be for case BOA 1677707 with the address of 639 to 643 H Warren Street. Would you please explain to the board?
Yes, Mr. Secretary, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott Quilty, Miller &amp; Hanley. This is an Article 80 large project review project. It's an all affordable project for Madison Park Development Corporation. We've actually not gone to the BPDA board yet for Article 80. Somehow it got snuck in under the accelerated certificate scheduling, so we've not gone to the board, BPDA board, for Article 80 approval yet. That's anticipated to go at this month's agenda, next month's agenda, February 13th. So, we would ask for a quick deferral. I believe February 25th may be available, and that would align, would be much appreciated because it would align very well with their funding deadline a few days later. So, that's the reason for the request.
Thank you. Caroline?
We could do March 4th, as the earliest date.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer to March 4th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
Are there any further requests for withdrawal or deferrals from the 9:30 timeframe?
Yes, Mr. Secretary, I have two cases to be deferred, first one being 115 Belgrade Avenue.
So, that is case BOA 1653968 with the address of 115 Belgrade Avenue. Would you go ahead and please explain?
Great, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. We're here to request a short deferral on this matter. We've completed the community process. The Civic Group has recently asked the mayor's office to request a deferral as they would like a little bit more information on some of the issues that were raised during the Butters meeting, as well as the Civic meeting, so we're willing to continue the dialogue with the Civic Group. So, we just ask again, just for a short deferral.
Okay, Caroline?
We could do March 4th.
Great, thank you.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer to March 4th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Great, thank you. The, Mr. Stenbridge, the second case is 17 Wichita Terrace.
So, that would be for case BOA 1561858 with the address of 17 Wichita Terrace. Go ahead, Attorney Spitz.
Great, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 168 H Street, first floor. We're here requesting again another short deferral for this matter, as there was a little discrepancy, a little issue with the setup plans that was reviewed by the planning department. For some reason, previous proposal was not abandoned correctly, so as if it was, appeared to be drafted, the recommendation from the planning department based upon two separate proposals or not one proposal combining the parcels. So, again, I've clarified that with Mr. Hampton, and they're working on reviewing the accurate set of drawings in order to revise and change the planning recommendation. So, again, we'd like a short deferral on this matter.
I just have a quick question. Do you anticipate any of the violations will change?
The violations, no, actually, the publication was actually correct. The planning department's recommendation was viewing it as if there was a separate proposal on 15 Wichita, which was actually incorrect. That should have been abandoned at the beginning. Again, for some reason, it was inadvertently, you know, still left within the drawings. And again, that's what the recommendation, so the plans that you actually have in front of you are accurate as well. Again, just their recommendation was viewing as if there was two projects, one at 17 and one at 15.
Understood. We could defer to March 4th.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, may I have a recommendation? I mean, a motion.
Motion to defer to March 4th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
Any further requests?
Yes, for 659 Cummins Highway, please.
So, that would be for, that is for case BOA 1631614 with the address of 679 Cummins Highway.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Mike Chavez, architect of Social Impact Collective and representative of the client, Jose Roviz. We've been asked to defer because the language on the original refusal letter has been changed, updated, so there's been, so just, there's only violations where adjusted, and they need to re-advertise for this hearing. So, they just said this, the next one available, we'll take that.
Um, we could do March 25th.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer until March 25th.
Is there a second?
Can't.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair, chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Any further requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this timeframe?
Yes, please, for 218 Bremen Street. It's at the bottom of the 9:30s. Okay. No, I missed the last one.
Finally, so that would be for case BOA 1578094 with the address of 218 Bremen Street. Would you go ahead and please explain?
Um, yes, good morning, members of the board, thank you. I'm here on behalf of Mohammed Hayek, the applicant. He's been traveling for some family emergencies, has not been able to address any of the feedback related to the proposal, so we would request a deferral, please.
Okay, Caroline?
We could do March 4th.
Um, would there be a later date?
Yeah. We could do March 25th or April 8th.
April 8th would be great.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer to April 8th.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
And, and again, any further requests for withdrawals or deferrals from 9:30? Hearing none, then we shall move on. First case is case BOA 1659172 with the address of 85 to 93 Glendale Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranti. I'm an attorney with a business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent City Realty. I'm joined here by Jacob Simmons of City Realty and Tanya Carrier of Calca Design, a project architect. Madam Chair, members, the proposed project consists of a four-story vertical residential addition above the existing single-story brick building at the corner of Glendale Avenue and Price Street in Alston. This has been the location of a one-story restaurant for many years. The plan would be to keep that ground floor space for future restaurant use and to add 14 new rental apartment units above. The unit mix is currently proposed is six studios, three one-bedroom units, and five two-bedroom units. In terms of zoning, this is a neighborhood that I would characterize as being of medium residential density, with a series of four-story residential buildings and some three-story buildings most frequently occurring. It is, however, zoned 2F 5,000, 2F, I'm sorry, a two-family zoning sub-district. That being said, I believe that each of the buildings across Glendale Avenue from the site is a 16-unit building, and there are several of those connected in a row, setting a prevailing density level much higher than the 2F zoning designation would indicate. Because it's a residential zoning sub-district, the past and future intended restaurant use is not allowed by zoning and requires a variance. The proposed new multifamily residential use also requires a variance. But again, it should be noted that the majority of the nearby residential buildings are also multifamily, with some two- and three-family dwellings populating an area westerly of the site, heading in the direction of Long Avenue and Alston Street. 2F zoning limits building height to two and a half stories and 35 feet, meaning zoning relief is also required for the proposed five-story height. Again, we see that most of the buildings in the immediate area exceed two and a half stories and 35 feet. The buildings across Glendale Avenue, which I mentioned earlier, appear to be a bit over 45 feet in height from sidewalk grade. Front, rear, and side yard setback relief are required, as well as relief for minimum lot size for the number of proposed new dwelling units. The setback violations owe solely to the fact that the existing building would be extended vertically, but the footprint would not be expanded. It's the vertical addition which triggers the setback violations, rather than any horizontal extension of the building, which is not being proposed. Urban design guidelines do prioritize a building on such a site as this conforming to existing building alignment along street lines, because this is a corner lot with the front and right side lot lines bordering Glendale Avenue and Price Road. The proposed floor area ratio is approximately 3.9, whereas the zoning FAR is a very meager .6, again, owing to the 2F zoning designation, which frankly, I would argue is a bit out of place here, since prevailing as-built conditions in most of the surrounding area are well in excess of code limited density. Because the project includes no on-site parking, relief would be needed from the board for insufficient off-street parking. The site is located in approximately three-minute walk from the Griggs Street Green Line stop and will feature ample bike storage, making this proposal strongly transit-oriented and aimed at the growing market segment of renters who do not own and do not want to own a motor vehicle in the city. Finally, at 14 units, this proposal is just under the threshold for Article 80 review. Nonetheless, we did engage with the planning department for a positive design review meeting in October, and that positivity, I think, is in fact reflected on the planning recommendation to the board. The IDP policy governing this project requires 13% affordability, resulting in two required IDP units. My client will be providing three IDP units for just over 21% affordability. With that, I will pause and take any questions that members may have.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Yes, what is the area medium income for those three IDP units?
Um, Mr. Valencia, it hasn't, we, because it's a non-Article 80 project, we haven't gone, we haven't formalized that yet with the BPDA. We were in touch as recently as, as yesterday with, with Ryan Frania of the mayor's office of housing. That being said, while the, while the, that hasn't been finalized, my client is proposing two units at 70% AMI and one at 100% AMI. Again, hasn't been formalized. Mr. Frania indicated that we would need to reach out to him and conclude the affordable housing agreement if this were to be approved by the board. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, good morning. Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted Anna Butters' meeting on August 6th of 2024, at which two members of the community spoke in support and one in opposition on the basis of lost views. Proponent additionally presented to the Alston Civic Association in September and again in November, which adopted a position of support with the request that there be no undergraduate rentals. Our office received one letter of opposition, which has been forwarded to the board. With that background, we defer to your judgment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, sir.
Good morning, thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Chris, representing the Carpenters Union on behalf of all our members that live and work at City of Boston, who want to go and represent support of this project.
Thank you. I see no additional raise hands at the moment.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Well, is the proponent willing to comply with this no undergraduate housing request?
Ms. Manietto, I, I'll let Jacob Simmons answer. I know the answer, but in terms of what my client will do in terms of rental policy, I think it's best to let, let Jacob speak for City Realty. Jacob, do you want to address that?
Sure, good morning, Jacob Simmons of City Realty, 500 Lincoln Street in Alston. Ms. Panado, we already spoke with the Alston Civic Association and are fully in agreement with that policy, so that will be adopted as part of our ongoing building operations. We, we believe it's a reasonable and beneficial cause.
Mr. Simmons, quick question, Mr. Simmons. The request was both for no undergraduate rentals and no short-term rentals, just confirming?
Confirming, both of those, we fully agree with.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I apologize for interrupting, Madam Chair. From ISD's perspective, we can't enforce a restriction for undergraduate students, either for or against that, just so the board members are aware.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I make a motion of approval with two provisos. The first one, that the plans should be submitted to the planning department, planning department for the same review. The second is that the applicant completes an housing agreement with the mayor's office of, office of housing for three affordable housing units.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge. Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to case BOA 1658038 with the address of 28 Suffolk Road. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. Joining me today is the owner, Mario Gonzalez, and the project architect, Mr. David O'Sullivan. This is a proposal that seeks a change, to change the occupancy from a two-family to a three-family by converting a basement into an additional dwelling unit. I just want to let everyone know, this is an actual owner-occupied building as well. This is aligned with the city's by right conversion of internal spaces to accessory dwelling units, except that a new well on the side of the building will be installed to provide access to the partially below-grade unit. Other than that, this would have been approved without having to go through zoning through the additional dwelling unit policy adopted by the city of Boston. This parcel falls within a 2F sub-district, which requires relief for a conditional use permit for the use change. Again, the footprint of the building will remain the same, except for that well on the left-hand side of the, of the structure. Basement unit will be approximately 737 square feet, a one-bedroom with eight-foot sailings. We have an additional violation for FAR. The required FAR is a .6, and the existing FAR is a .74, which is a pre-existing nonconformity, but we need relief as we are worsening the condition by proposing a .89. In concluding, this proposal is aligned with the new neighborhood housing zoning initiative just announced back in November 2024. At this point, Madam Chair, I'm going to turn it over to you for any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, put the record in. My name is Jeremy Bemphry. I'm the Rockspur, the community engagement specialist for the Office of Neighborhood and Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an Butters meeting held on October 16th, where Butters made a few inquiries regarding if the property will be owner-occupied and the means of egress. No stance was voiced during the meeting. The project was then presented to Pasadena Suffolk The project was then presented to Pasadena Suffolk Columbia Road Neighborhood Association and received conditional support that they dispose of trash in timely fashion and not stored in the backyard for extended periods of time. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Councilor World's office?
Hi, yes, thank you, everyone. Anastasi here from Councilor World's office. Thanks for commenting on 28 Suffolk. We just wanted to express our support for the project as long as these community requests are heard and addressed regarding trash, proper trash disposal, in addition to ensuring change from two-family to three-family unit as well. So we appreciate the due diligence and we look forward to the ongoing conversation and the next steps with this project. Thank you.
Mayor?
Okay, guess you've had your hands down. You have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Okay. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to case BOA 1644639 with the address of 71 Williams Street. The applicant and/or their representative are present. Would they please explain?
Good morning, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Pugini on behalf of this floor unit proposal at 71 A Williams Street in Jamaica Plain. With me this morning is David Freed, the proposals architect, and Paul and Justin Iantosca, the owners of the property. 71 A Williams Street in Jamaica Plain, the zoning in the sub-district is 3F 4,000. The lot size is 2,880 square feet. This proposal is to construct a three-story, four-unit building on an existing vacant lot. The project proponent owns the abutting building at 71 Williams Street. The new building will comprise the four units, and the unit mix will be as follows. Unit one is going to be located in the basement. It'll be one bed, one bath, 691 square feet. This unit far exceeds all quality-of-life and life-safety requirements. Unit two is located in the first floor. It's a three-bed, two-bath, and that's 1,187 square feet. Unit three is located on the second floor. That is a three-bed, two-bath, 1,227 square feet. And unit four is located on the third floor, and that is three-bed, two-bath, 1,257 square feet. This building will fit... Excuse me, this building will fit the surrounding area from a design context and use standpoint. Almost all the structures along this stretch will be three-story multifamily dwellings with flat roofs. And after that, there are some larger multifamily homes, including the redevelopment of the former Doyle's Bar site, which is located next door. Also, most of the properties on this street are similar in size to this lot that you are looking at this morning. There will be two parking spaces associated with this proposal that will be accessed through an existing curb cut at 69 Williams Street. We've had a lengthy community process consisting of an abudders meeting, meeting with the Stony Brook Neighborhood Civic Association, and a presentation before the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. We have submitted seven letters of support from the abudders, including two contiguous abudders, as well as a letter of support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to David Freed just to walk through the designs quickly, but we appreciate the opportunity to present this morning. David?
Do you see him in the audience but not as a panelist, Mr. Pugini?
He was... He told me he was on, so...
Look at the...
He's muted.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is David Freed. I'm an architect at Chicken Company, and I'm happy to take you through the plans. If you could quickly scroll back up. Thank you. So the owner wanted a building that would fit with the context of the neighborhood and really wanted to follow pretty much the same footprints that exist on the side of Williams Street. Next image, please. And to that extent, we try to do that as much as possible. So the building is sited similarly to the other buildings adjacent to it. There is a vehicular easement to the left that will provide access to a tandem parking space in the rear. That easement also provides parking to the new building at 69 Williams. We have a... Our entrance is similar to that of the others along this stretch, and we've integrated a lift into this porch for 521 CMR compliance to make a handicap accessible entrance and a group one unit on the first floor. Next slide, please. Next slide, please, sorry. Go to the plans. Yeah, so here we have just a quick site plan. We would have... The main entrance to the building is off of this front porch. There is another separate entrance to the basement unit off to the side, and then there is a rear egress for that unit as well as for the basement storage area. Next slide, please. The image on the left is our basement plan, and we have a fairly large unit, 691 square feet. We have a one-bedroom in which the light far exceeds the code requirement. We're at 27%, and the requirement is 8%. We have windows along the front here. We have a large egress window on the side, and we have pretty much direct access from the bedroom to the front door for egress. The limited dining area has a window well also, and the rear has a large patio door for egress as well as for lighting air. Our next... The next image on the right would be the typical floor plan for the upper units, which is a three-bed, two-bath configuration. Next slide, please. Can you keep going to the elevations? Thank you. One more, please. So you can see here that our building is very much... Very similar to the buildings immediately adjacent into the rest of the context of that street. Next slide, please. The image on the left would be our front image, the front elevation. The image on the right side would be our rear elevation, in which you can see the rear access to the basement unit here. We have some small portions for the upper units above. Next slide, please. That would be our side elevation on the right side... I'm sorry, on the left side. Next slide, please. And then this would be the other side elevation with a section cut down through the entrance to that basement unit, in which we tried to make it as non-basement-y as possible. Next slide, please. Here we have a couple sections cut through the window well in the bedroom, and then also a section cut through the patio in the rear and the patio door. Next slide, please. And then finally, this is the rendering of our project to scale. And that's the presentation. If anyone has any questions?
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Freed, so the way that you accessed the parking through that easement, is that easement already existing for the new construction to the right?
Yes, yes.
The next curb cut's already there, correct?
Yes, the curb is existing.
And regardless of your parking, there's going to be a driveway there?
Yes, yes, which serves the other building to the right.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I think Bob D'Amico from the Transportation Department is here.
Well, I understand. I just want questions from the board first, and I also have one. I may have missed it. Is it... Are these homeownership or rentals?
They're rentals, Madam Chair.
Okay.
The owner of this building actually owns the building directly in a sort of way.
Which is also rentals?
It is, yes.
Okay. All right, if there are no other questions from the board, if Mr. D'Amico would like to weigh in, I see his comment already, so... Okay, any... Let's open it up for public testimony.
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Jamaica Plain Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abudders meeting held on September 19th, where abudders did have inquiries that were addressed during the meeting. The project then presented to both Stony Brook Neighborhood Association, who did not take a vote, and Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, who did vote to support the project. We have also received seven letters of support and four letters in opposition of the project. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jordan Free is here from Counselor Ben Weber's office, represents District 6. Counselor Weber would like to go on record in support of this proposal. His support is in line with the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council's vote. Thank you very much.
Frank? Frank's? What's up? Looking to give testimony here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know why my camera's not on, but I just really want to go on record. My name is Rosa Frank. I live at 115 Williams. I really vigorously support the proposal as it is. To put a four-story on Williams makes no sense. All the other buildings are three stories, so the builders are really keeping true to the neighborhood. And it's critical that we have parking. To put in more people on Williams Street and not offer parking would be a nightmare, so I am incredibly grateful that the builders have been thoughtful to include parking in the plans, that the builder has taken into account exactly what we want in our neighborhood, and we support this proposal as it is presented exactly.
Perfect. Lee Goodman, looking to give testimony here?
Hi, thank you. My name is Lee Goodman. I'm the owner of the site next door, 69 Williams, and we have the easement through our site to provide parking. I just want to go on record in support, you know, in a shortage of housing that currently exists when you can build four homes for people on a vacant lot. I can't think of a much better use. And briefly on parking, I do know, you know, some folks in the city right now think, you know, we live in a magical fairyland where people don't drive. But in Jamaica Plain, one of the main requests was to provide some parking, and they were very creative in using the easement and getting parking onto the lot. So again, I support the project. Thank you.
Sally? We sent a request on you here.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sally Swenson. I'm representing Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Development Corporation, going on record to support the project. As Lee just mentioned, well, I don't think he mentioned, but we're a partner with Watermark in the abutting property, and we support this use of an empty lot of land, and the solution of the basement unit is very creative. And anything that brings... Everything that creates another unit of housing and that is very much in line with the look and feel of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mayor?
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair... Madam Ambassador, I'm sorry. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Chris representing the carpenters who would like to go and represent support of this project.
Okay, and they will all settle with their hands. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve. I know the big push on open space, but I think that parking is already... The easement to that parking is already existing there.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Give up.
Thank you, everybody.
Next, we have case BOA 1657430 with the address of 450 to 454 Amory Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jeffrey Olinger, and I am the architect representing the project here with Chris DeSisto of Maplehurst Builders, who is the building owner. We've included some slides from our earlier community presentations, which helped to outline the building's dimensions as well as what we're seeking with regards to affordability and the unit mix. We are seeking... The project is currently on an 8,582-foot site. The lot coverage will be approximately 4,754 square feet. We are seeking 14 units that are condo units over two retail units, each of which are approximately 1,000 square feet. We will be providing 14 covered parking spaces. We are also providing a 16-foot driveway off of Green Street. The project is also immediately across the street from the MVTA Green Street Station. And we have also included two off-street parking spaces that are incorporated into our drive aisle that'll be used for building maintenance as well as other building-related activities. Our variances that we're requesting are both dimensional and use-related. The project currently exists on a local industrial site and is not zoned for multifamily building. Our project seeks to add more housing to the Jamaica Plain neighborhood. This will be the second part or second phase of an existing successful development. Bartlett Square 1, which exists at the north corner of Amory and Green Street. And so this project, we believe, will be a much-needed follow-up or sequel to that project, which is a transit-oriented project that is tailored to the Jamaica Plain neighborhood. If you'd like to go through the plans, I'm happy to talk about those as well.
Questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to ask the planning department about their recommendation. They are recommending referral based on plans that need to be submitted, so I'm wondering if the planning department can clarify about having the right plans for this hearing.
Mr. Hampton, are you on?
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. Mr. Valencia, yeah, we didn't have accurate plans to make a recommendation on this. We based everything that you saw on the refusal letter, because this has gone through several changes over the year. And so we, you know, we recommended deferral, but I would defer to the board on this, on the merits of it. I don't want to hold up this case simply because we didn't have it. As you read during our recommendation, we have made cases that there should be zoning relief granted for several of the violations, but it's just at the time that the recommendations were due to you. We didn't have the most accurate plans.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hampton.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, there were comments from the Disabilities Commission. I'm wondering if the proponent is aware of those?
Do you want to read them into the record?
From the Disabilities Commission, said the entrance at steer number 103 is not accessible. As this is new construction, all entrances need to be accessible. And then list the requirement after that.
Madam Chair, if I may respond?
Please.
So that may be a slightly inaccurate interpretation of how our building is designed. We have an elevator in the building that's ADA accessible. It also has an ADA accessible entrance off of Amory Street, and our covered accessible entrance is incorporated into our garage, which has elevator access. So a person that is disabled will be fully accessible to this building. So a, a person that is disabled will be fully accessible to this building.
Yeah, thank you. Other questions from the board?
Yes, based on the number of uni, of units, how many IDP units are you providing?
We'll be providing two units.
Is not, is Deadline JP Rocks requiring, requiring you to provide 30% of the project as affordable or not?
Uh, I, I'm unaware of that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Jamaica Plain Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of two abode's meetings, uh, one held on October 29th and again on November 21st, where abode's did voice concerns regarding off-street and on, on premises parking, uh, the facade of the building, planted trees, and the commercial spaces usage. Uh, the project was then presented to Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, where they received a vote of unanimous approval. Uh, thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Minor?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jordan Free is here from Counselor Ben Weber's office. Uh, the council would like to go on record in support of this project and appreciates Mr. DeSisto's engagement with neighbors throughout the process to create much-needed housing in this lot. Thank you.
Minor? Want to give testimony, minor? I don't know if his hand's just been up since the first time. We have an iPad user here. Are you looking to give testimony on this proposal? I sent a request to unmute you. No response there. I have no additional raised hands at the moment. Okay, any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion of approval with a few provisos. One, that the plan continue to review with the planning department. Second, that the proponent enters into a housing agreement with the, uh, the office, the mayor's office of housing, reviewing the requirements from the Plan JP Rocks for affordability. Um, that's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we have two companion cases. But first, this case BOA 164 2917, with the address of 67 Harvest Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 164 2935, which also has the address of 67 Harvest Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please point to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Elizabeth Lake for the, for the applicant. Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, also on with me this morning is the project architect, David Freed, and Matthew Johannison of Fazio Enterprises. Um, can you move to the next page? Thank you. Um, so 67 Harvest Street is located in a triple-decker residential sub-district in Dorchester. It's surrounded by a mix of two-family and multifamily residential buildings. Currently on the site, um, uh, can you move to the next page, please? Thank you. Um, currently, the site is underutilized. Um, there is, there are two existing single-story garages on-site that aren't being used for anything other than some temporary storage at the moment. Um, the current condition of the garages are, are poor. Um, there's one garage in the front that has direct access from Harvest Street, and there is a second existing garage in the rear. Um, the applicant is seeking to fully utilize and improve the site by taking down the existing garages and construct a new triple-decker with six residential units. The current conditions of the site has been attracting some nuisance activity. We think this would be a great improvement to the site. Um, neighbors have been observing individuals going to the bathroom on-site. There's been some evidence of drug and alcohol abuse, and also some evidence that individuals may be sleeping there. Um, so to fully utilize and improve the site, we think this would be a great improvement to the neighborhood, um, or at least this site in particular. Um, I wanted to note, can, can you move to the next slide, please? Um, so this slide will show in the center top photograph, that's the current conditions. That's a view from Harvest Street. Um, and the bottom aerial photo shows the location of the site. Next slide, please. And I would like to note that we did perform a density study. Um, you'll see the proposed plans in a moment, but I just wanted to note that, um, the proposed project is consistent with that of the surrounding area. In many cases, it's less dense than other nearby properties. So just wanted to note that for the board. Um, and we have provided a copy of this density study for the board. Next slide, please. Um, this right here is our proposed landscaping plan, but I think this gives you a good idea of the site. This is an L-shaped double lot. There's an existing triple-decker at 174 Boston Street, which the applicant also owns. And the proponent's seeking to develop the other leg of the L with the frontage on Harvest Street. Um, as you can see here, the applicant is proposing to add some well-appointed trees and plantings on 67 Harvest and also onto 174 Boston. We think that this would allow, will allow it to really blend into, nicely into the neighborhood and will be an attractive addition. Next slide, please. Um, so I will briefly run through the, the plans for the board. Um, as I may have mentioned, we are proposing an underground parking garage with bike storage, um, a trash and recycling area, utilities, and a common lift. That's on the left side of, of your screen. We did receive a variance from the Architectural Access Board for the lift, and I did provide, uh, the board with a copy of that variance. So I think that might address part of, um, the, the second hearing that's scheduled for today, um, for this property. Um, on the right side, the first floor has two units. One, one bed, one bath in the front, and a two-bed, one bath in the rear. Next slide, please. The second and third floor plans are identical. They each have two units with two beds, one bath. Uh, the proponent is proposing a total of six, um, rental units. Next slide, please. Um, I'll run through the elevations. This shows, um, the rear and the front elevations of the proposed building. Next slide, please. The proposed left-side elevation, so facing towards 174 Boston. Next slide, please. And the proposed right-side elevation. Next slide, please. Um, and finally, the proposed rendering of the exterior. We think it blends in nicely and has some nice character to it. Um, and with respect to the relief we're seeking today, I'll kind of run through those briefly. We are seeking a conditional use permit to allow the construction of a second structure on the lot. Um, the proposed structure will have independent street frontage onto 67 Harvest Street that is contextual and non-intrusive to the surrounding area. The proponent also seeks several variances with respect to certain land use, dimensional and parking violations. But to summarize, um, we are seeking multifamily use. And though the multifamily use proposed does exceed the three-family, um, occupancy, which is permitted by zoning in this particular area, multifamily use is common on the block and the surrounding area. With respect to the certain dimensional violations, the lot area provides sufficient space for what's being proposed, and the non-conformities on the site are similar and even less severe than many of the nearby lots. With respect to the parking violations, um, the parking that we have on-site is sufficient, is sufficient to accommodate the number of units. We also have some bike storage in the basement, um, garage, and we are adding one on-street parking spot by removing one of the curb cuts. I will note for the board that we, that the plans show six proposed underground parking spaces. We did review the planning comments, and the applicant is amenable to removing two of the parking spots, um, as suggested by the planning board, if the board would like to see that as well. Um, with the, with the board, board's approval, you know, this project will fit in nicely with the context of the neighborhood. I'd like to note for the board that this is a family business that owns several properties in the neighborhood, including the two abutting properties, 174 Boston and 65 Harvest. Um, this is not a project that they intend to flip, but they have a strong commitment to being long-term property owners in the neighborhood. Um, and they really take pride in caring for and maintaining their properties. We think it'd be a great benefit and an attractive addition to the neighborhood. We have received overwhelming community support for the project, and it will provide some much-needed housing to the city of Boston. So that concludes my, my presentation. Um, I'll open it up to the board for any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? There are none. Can I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Ava Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 67 Harvest Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including an abode's meeting on September 9th, 2024, which was attended by about five constituents. The primary feedback from this meeting was concerns about parking and congestion on the street, considering the pro, proposal had not enough parking, in the opinion of the constituents. And, uh, increasing the density on the street is also removing the residential feeling to the neighborhood, they commented. Additionally, the proposal was reviewed with the John W. McCormick Civic Association, which convened on November 19th of 24. The association has expressed support regarding the proposal and noted that there would be conditional provisions that include a garden space at the front of the building, as well as confirming uniformity in communication with other homes on the street. Ultimately, the Civic Association voted 15 in favor and five opposed, but the proposal did receive a letter of support from the Civic Association. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board's judgment on this decision. Thank you for your time and consideration, everyone.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Liam from Counselor Fitzgerald's office. Our office would like to go on record in support of the proposal. Thank you.
Um, Counselor Murphy's office?
Hello and good morning. Good morning, Madam Ambassador. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Kevin O'Sullivan from Counselor Aaron Murphy's office. Counselor Murphy is in support, uh, joining Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor President Louis Jenney, and the McCormick Civic Association. Um, the proponent has shown a willingness to work with the community and revise plans as needed. So, uh, Counselor Murphy is in support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Edward Sweta? You looking to give testimony here? Hi, looking to give testimony? Sure, it's going on. I'll go to Rob. Are you not sure if you're with Edward? You looking to give testimony here?
Yeah, we're brothers. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I can't get my picture off, but.
No, you're fine.
I, I'm, I'm Robert Sweta. I live at 172 Boston Street, next door to 174. Uh, I just, the owners, I mean, from what the architects know, they seem very nice and all that, but they, I am proposing it. Uh, they were nice to say, uh, because when they were gonna remove their tree, they offered to remove our tree as well, which we want to get rid of. But in the last proposal, they said the fence would be coming into our land, so we'd be losing some property. Uh, the other thing too with the building, we would lose sunlight, especially for our neighbor next door at 170, our cousin Terry, geez elderly and, and enjoys the warm weather there, and there just wouldn't be any sunlight for that. And in terms of the building of it, I work at night at home writing, and I have a lot of Zoom meetings during the day. I'm just concerned with the loud noises and if that would disrupt that. And in terms, uh, I, I think, uh, Ms. Lake was talking about, uh, nuisance things, but I think part of it is coming from 174 Boston Street. I'm wondering if it might be because of an absentee owner, because a lot, a lot of times, especially like Thursday nights to even going into Monday, we get arguing, yelling, crying, people banging the house trying to get in, and then other people telling people swear and to leave. And there was a fire about two months ago. It was scary, but everyone's okay. But I guess there was a lot of damage in the back of 174. And my brother and I went a few days later just to give the family some Dunkin' Donuts and things. And it's like seven in the morning, and a guy was sleeping there. And, uh, we were able to wake him up, and then he was trying to get in the house, and he looked discoherent and everything. And, uh, uh, just to like, uh, people, they don't answer the doors like either at night. So like, if we get a package by mistake of their mail. And, I mean, we'll, we'll hear like, people inside and lights going on, but they just, uh, don't answer and thing. But basically, and also too with the parking and just feeling squeezed out of our neighborhood, because we've been in, we've had this house since like around 1907, 1905. But basically, I'm just concerned because the owner's not there, that a lot of the, the trash and stuff and, and the arguing. And always, I'd also hear lots of times on the weekends, just like, it sounds like beer cans being tossed and bottles, beer bottles being tossed and smashed on the street.
Thank, thank you. No, no additional raised hands at the moment. Would the applicant like to address those concerns?
Um, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to respond to, uh, Mr. Sweta's assertion that there's, we may have proposed some encroachment on his property. I just wanted to clarify for the board that, um, none of our proposed plans were, were proposing any sort of encroachment onto, onto the neighborhood properties, including his property.
Any other questions from the board?
Um, I, I'd like to ask, what are you doing in the interim to deal with some of the kind of quality-of-life issues happening on the site?
Thank you, Ms. Panato. Um, I just, I'd just like to, uh, confirm that, you know, we're not absentee owners. We have boots on the ground regularly. We are, um, taking care of any issues that may have arose from, from the fire that happened at 174 Boston Streets. Um, you know, we do want to move forward with, um, improve, improving this area, because, you know, like I mentioned before, we are committed, or the, the applicant is committed to maintaining these properties long-term, and we want, um, the neighborhood to find us to be, you know, good neighbors as well. We want to be good neighbors to people. So just wanted to confirm that we are aware of any issues and we're working to address those.
Thank you. Is that the owner, Ms. Lake? That has their hand up? Matt?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, can you weigh in on some of the concerns raised by your aboder?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yes, so we have a full-time maintenance man that lives down the street from the property. He goes by, uh, we have four properties in Dorchester. The two right there, and then Florence at, uh, Dorchester Ave, right by the carpenters' building. So on his way in every single morning to the office, he stops by the two houses in Dorchester. Um, I go by on my way home every day. We had two tenants on the first and third floor that when the fire happened, the next day, we reached out to some other, um, landlords we know, and we had both of them apartments the following day. The landlords worked with us, and we got them apartments the next day. Those tenants were each with us. One was there for eight years, and one was there for four years. Um, this is the first I've ever heard of complaints of fighting or anything like that coming from that unit. Um, Eugene, who lived across the street, we were good friends with him. I spoke to him almost every day. We never got any complaints from Eugene. Um, so this is actually the first I've ever heard of these complaints, of any of that going on. Um, but like Liz said, we do take pride in making sure that our buildings are taken care of. We want the neighborhood to come to us with anything we have. Uh, prior to this, I did knock on Robert Sweta's door several times, trying to get some information from him and the community. He never once answered any of my knocks, so we haven't really spoke. I know our maintenance man, Elvis, has spoke to him several times, and he said he's always been nice and never mentioned any of those complaints. Uh, but like I said, we do, do everything we can to make sure our properties are well taken care of. We want to keep tenants there for a long time, so we want to keep them happy. So if he does have any issues, we would definitely like to address them. If you could, um, let me know about those at another time. I'm def, I'm around all the time. But, uh, thank you for the opportunity to go in front of you guys.
Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, BPDA design review.
Is there a second? That can't. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Y-yes.
As we will.
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we have case BOA 1652922, with the address of 663 Columbia Road. The applicant and/or their representative are present. Will they please explain to the board?
Sorry, we have a, callers 617436, are you looking, is this your case?
Just give me a moment. I didn't see, we hit skip cases, sorry. Uh, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Mark Oakrent. I'm one of the owners of the project. Uh, my wife, Ellen Kaplan, has submitted the application, but unfortunately, she's not able to be with us today. Uh, like to take you through, um, the details of the case. If we could go to the next slide, please? Apologies, this is a different presentation than I was expecting, but I'm happy to use it. So, uh, the, the scope of the conversation today, we have a pre-existing three-family structure at 663 Columbia Ave. We are not looking to increase the unit count or any other, um, uh, major characteristics of the building. We're looking to, uh, bring into conformance pre-existing non-conformances that existed with the structure. Uh, the pictures here shown here are showing the existing basement unit that existed when we procured the building, um, earlier last year. Our intent is to duplex the first floor down into the basement, um, and be able to create office space on the first floor with bedrooms and bathrooms in the basement. Uh, we would be adding, um, necessary egress windows and window wells to, uh, the applicable locations on the side of the structure. Um, we wouldn't be changing the FAR from the pre-existing condition, however, it would be non-conforming with the current standards. Uh, we also obviously wouldn't be changing the outline or the footprint of the building, however, that is pre-existing and non-conforming with the minimum setback, um, in front area, I believe, front guard area, um, required on Columbia Ave. Uh, and if we could go to the next slide? I'm sorry, if we could go to the next slide? And keep going forward, please? One more. So here you can see the elevation of the building as it stands today. This would not be changed. Again, we wouldn't be building up or adding any additional units to the building. Can you please go to the next slide? Same with the rear elevation. Can you please go to the next slide? This is the, uh, plan showing the, uh, first floor duplexed down into the basement, still maintaining the single same unit, um, adding office, four-bedroom spaces on the first floor, and, uh, um, adjusting the layout in the basement to, uh, additional bathroom spaces and, uh, more comfortable bedrooms to maximize the, um, footprint that's within that space. Please go to the next unit or next slide? Uh, this just speaks to the second and third floor plans, um, that would be, uh, not within the scope of today's conversation, um, no issue with the permitting or, um, proposal we have there. Um, please continue. Uh, I'm sorry, could you go to the next slide? Thank you. Uh, so again, I apologize, this was not the presentation I thought that we were reviewing today. I had some other slides to, to describe the situation a bit better. Um, the building at 663 Columbia is commensurate with all the other buildings on Columbia Ave. We're not moving the physical structure, we're not changing the outside layout, we're not increasing the number of units, simply looking to legalize the pre-existing non-conformances. Certainly defer to any of the questions from the board or the community. Appreciate the time today.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Mid-Dorchester Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting held on October 3rd with no abutters in attendance. Next, the project was presented to Dorchester North Civic, where they voted to support the project. Our office has also received one letter of support from the Dorchester North Civic Group. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board's judgment.
Thank you.
We have a caller, um, 6174.
Hello, Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead, Liam.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Liam Ramus from Council Fitzgerald's office. Our office would let go on record in support of the proposal.
Thank you.
And see no additional raised hands at the moment? Oh, let's, oh, sorry, Bob, are you looking to give testimony here? Bob, Domenico? Go ahead, we'll see.
Hello.
Would that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Appreciate your time. It is.
Next, we have case BOA 1662174, with the address of 641 East Eighth Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, will they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, with Adams and Marancy Business Address of 168 Eighth Street, first floor. Uh, joining me today are the owners Kevin and Erica Donovan, as well as the project architect slash builder, Bill Penny. Uh, this is a proposal that seeks to convert an existing headhouse in a roof deck on a three-family structure to an exclusive-use covered additional living space for unit number two. This new space will be approximately 650 square feet. Uh, this is, again, this is an owner-occupied building, and this space will be allocated to the owner who lives in unit number two. Uh, we have violations for building height and a roof structure restriction. We need relief as such, as we are altering the profile of the roof. And our new proposed height is 44 feet, 44 and a half feet, that is, which is above the 40-foot requirement of this sub-district. Further, the existing height, including the headhouse, is approximately 42 feet. The reason for this height increase was to meet the building code. At this point in time, Madam Chair, I'm gonna turn it over to you for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Siggy Johnson at the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on August 8th of 2024, at which there were two supporters and no other comments were made. They additionally coordinated with the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, which is the active civic group in this area, and they are supportive of the proposal. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ross?
Hi, everybody. Ross Scholman here, um, owner of 640 East Eighth, directly across the street. Um, my spouse and my wife are in support of this proposal.
Thank you.
And we have no additional. Oh, go ahead.
This is Sydney from Counselor Flynn's office. Counselor Flynn would like to go in record of opposition. He's heard from many long-term residents and shares concerns on the precedent of exceeding the existing zoning height of 40 feet for additional living space, as well as roof decks. There is a considerable concern among neighbors that this will set a precedent, and more proposals will follow, ignoring the height restriction of 40 feet. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Any other questions from?
Can I, can I, Juan, just to Counselor Flynn's sentiments briefly?
Sure.
Um, Madam Chair, as you heard from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, uh, there weren't any sort of concerns originally. The first concern was that we were gonna set a precedent at that height, but again, uh, that existing height that we have with that roof, with the, with the current, uh, headhouse that we do have on the property is 42 feet, again, which is above, uh, which is pre-existing above the, the 40-foot height requirement. Uh, again, this, you know, the proposal is pretty consistent with the VPDA's recommendation for approval. According to the height, there won't be any sort of impacts casting the shadow on there, again, because of the structures and the heights of the surrounding buildings. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1649371, with the address of 105 North Washington, North Washington Street, I believe. Um, I also believe this is an Article 8 case. Uh, and with that, if the applicant and/or their representative are present, will they please explain to the board?
I think the next one is an Article 8?
Um, okay.
In either case, if the applicant is here.
Well.
I just sent a request to become a panelist. Adamir, once you become a panelist, you can unmute yourself and start your video.
Hi, everyone. My name is Adamir. I'm representing, uh, 105 North Washington Street on behalf of Aizad Khan, the owner. He's also on this Zoom call. Uh, can I share my screen or?
Uh, we have to use whatever you submitted.
Okay, so we are proposing, uh, additional, uh, residential unit on the first floor and the basement. There are two residential units and, uh, office on the basement and on the first floor. Uh, the owner is stating that, uh, past two years that he owns the building, he hasn't gotten in even one applicant for office, and he's, uh, turning this to residential, so from two residential units and offices, first and basement, he's for both.
Mr. Taska, you may wanna go off-screen, you're frozen. I don't know if the owner, if you're on, if you wanna proceed? Jessica, is there any way to, I don't know, to?
Yeah, let me, um, I just added. Adamir, if you're talking, we can't hear you.
I can, I can present, I can present.
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you.
I can present, yeah, sorry. So my name is Aizad Khan, and I'm owner of the building, and I'm, uh, the owner for the last, uh, more than one and a half year now, since 2023. And this is basically, uh, a mixed-use building correctly. There, there are, there is a residential space on first and second and third floor, and the ground and basement is an office space right now. So we have not received any interest from any party for the last two years for any office space, and there is also a next-door building where with a huge office space, and it is also vacant, and they are also waiting for all the offices. So we have decided to, uh, to convert this office space into another apartment. So it is going to be three apartments, one on the ground and basement, one in the, in the middle floor, and one in the third and fourth floor. So we have already gone through the community process, and, uh, we have defended our case there, and I think we have approval from there. So we are, we're not making any change in the footprint, it is just a, a, a change of use, uh, for the ground floor and the basement from office to residential apartment. And, and we also know that there is a shortage of, and we have received a lot of interest for the residential unit as well. So that is the reason.
And just to confirm, currently, as office space, it would have been both the basement and the ground level?
Yes. Yeah, it is vacant, yeah, it is vacant since long.
Any questions from the board?
Um, is the applicant aware that this, um, building is in the coastal flood of resilience overlay district and has taken that into consideration?
Uh, yes, I think that is, that is, that was considered by the, uh, architect, and we also have the flood insurance as well.
I didn't hear the end of that, you also have what?
Uh, flood insurance.
Of flood insurance?
Yeah.
Other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Ava Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 105 North Washington Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including the distribution of a subcommittee flyer on October 21st of 2024. We received no feedback from constituents. Additionally, the proposal was discussed with the local civic associations, uh, being Munich and Neura, that convened on, uh, November 19th, 2024. Both of the associations have expressed non-opposition regarding the proposal. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services differs to the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everybody, for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. It's Ashan Parha for Counselor Colletti's office. At this time, the council would like to go and support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no additional raised hands.
With that, any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Sorry, Madam Chair, is the VPDA on?
Mr. Hampton?
Hi, and thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Jeff Hampton of the, uh, City of Boston Planning Department. Uh, this is a similar proposal to the one that was on Charme Ave a couple of months ago, where they wanted to extend, uh, residential unit into the basement in the coastal flood. Uh, we took a stance of opposition on that one, and as you can see in ours, uh, the same issue has arisen again, uh, and we are opposed to it because it is in the coastal flood. We don't think that there should be living space in the basement, uh, in these types of, uh, buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I will put out a motion of denial without prejudice. I agree with the planning department, um, that, you know, there shouldn't be units below the sea level rise, uh, flood elevation.
It's already, it's already an office unit there, existing office unit there.
Right, but you're putting people down there that all live there and sleep there.
Okay, I heard a motion and a second. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we have case BOA 1595729, with the address of 60 South Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, will they please explain to the board?
Hello, Madam, excuse me, hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, good morning, my name is David Linhardt, at Coulson and Stores, uh, business address at One Post Office Square. And I'm joined with members of the project team, Matthew Powers and Danny Whitten with Nanfong, and Eric's, um, with SGA. Uh, I'll turn over initially to Matthew to give an introduction about the proponent, and then we'll continue with the presentation.
Thank you, David. Madam Chair, fellow board members, uh, my name is Matthew Powers, I'm the CEO of Nanfong Life Sciences Real Estate. We're headquartered at 51 Sleeper Street in Boston. Um, just to give you an overview of us and who we are and what we do, um, uh, we are a Boston-based, uh, real estate development company, um, specializing in life science real estate, as our name implies. Uh, we're headquartered in Boston, as I said. Our whole team is based here in Boston, uh, and, and we have a track record, uh, we've, we've been doing this now for, uh, at least six years this March here in Boston. Um, so we have successful track record, um, so far in Boston with two buildings that we have, um, uh, executed projects on, are fully leased up to life science tenants. Um, I also think it's important to know, you know, um, the life science use for this building is a buy-right use, um, so we're not here, um, uh, in, in search of any relief for a life science use for the building. But you'll note that we acquired the building a little over two years ago, and, um, you know, we spent a lot of time here, um, understanding the building in the context of the neighborhood and, and coming out of COVID and what's, uh, most value-add for the neighborhood. Um, so, you know, we're not a group that comes in and buys real estate to flip quickly and, and try and, um, figure that out from a financial perspective, and I think that's evident in the work that we do in the community. Um, we are the, the single largest, uh, partner with the MR8, um, Friends of Martin Park Foundation, so I'm sure most of you know, that's, uh, Martin Richard, the young boy that was killed in the Boston Marathon bombing. Uh, we support, uh, we're the financial support and sponsor for their charitable, uh, fundraising Uh, we support, uh, we're the financial support and sponsor for their charitable fundraising activities to support the, the playground and the Friends of Martin Park. We're also, um, partnered with the, uh, Condon Community Center in South Boston, uh, where we have, uh, a longstanding relationship with them. Um, as an example, this, this past summer, um, the children in Condon, the Condon Community Center, as many of you know, was under renovation. And so there was, a lot of activities were discontinued for the, the young children who attend the Condon Community Center. And so we developed a science, technology, and math curriculum that we hosted. Uh, we build out display labs in our, in one of our buildings. Um, and, um, employees from our company and our tenant, life science companies, um, taught a curriculum of science and technology and math, uh, for the, the students of the, uh, for the, uh, the children who attend the Condon Community Center. So, um, David will walk you through this in detail. It's important to know that, you know, we've spent a lot of time, as I said, really thinking about the context and the community. Um, and, and that's very important to us. And so I think you'll see that here. There's some images to show really the context of this is around, uh, the roof deck. But David, uh, I'll turn it back to you to maybe walk through the slides.
Great, thank you, Matthew. Uh, so this side, this slide, we're starting here to, just to orient ourselves, uh, to the, to the building, um, also known as Two Financial Center, sixty South. And, uh, you can see it's an existing office building. Uh, as, as Matthew mentioned, uh, we're, we're looking at swapping between as-of-right uses on certain floors. Uh, and, and, and that has actually gone through small project review. Um, I, I should mention that, uh, we initially proposed, uh, up to six floors. That's in the description of the, of the proposed project that, uh, was read out earlier. Uh, we're initially programming at this time, three floors, uh, you know, to swap between uses. So, um, a little bit of a moving target. In any case, these are as-of-right uses. And as mentioned, went through small project review, actually achieved the, the vote on December twelfth, just at the end of last year. Uh, the, the, the reason to come to the Board of Appeal is actually not because of the uses, but more so the project involves changes to the roof. And rooftop additions, uh, by the underlying zoning need conditional use approval. So if we go to the next slide, uh, that, that will show, uh, what's happening on the roof. I don't know if, uh, that could be advanced. Oh, there we go. And so you can see in blue the existing penthouse. Uh, in red, there's an extension to that penthouse for, for rooftop mechanicals. Uh, there's also reconfiguration, reconfiguration of the, an existing roof deck. And, um, the underlying zoning for Leather District requires that rooftop additions cannot be visible from the public way. And that's part of achieving that conditional use approval. So we wanted to include a few slides that show the street view. So if we keep advancing, uh, to the next slide, you can see from left to right, uh, it, it looks the same, that on the right is the proposed view. And what's happening on the roof, uh, can't actually be seen from the street. So if, if you continue this and it, and it shows you, um, you know, different vantage points, Essex, Essex Street, Lincoln Street. If you keep advancing, can walk around to a different side of the building. These are not super exciting slides because on the left and on the right, they look the same. Uh, but it, but it's worth noting that it can't be seen from the street. So maybe it'll get advanced. Uh, in any case, I can tell you as a preview, the next two slides will show you different vantage points. Uh, and again, no difference from left to right. Uh, so, oh, there you go. All right, so that, that's actually the extent of our brief presentation, again focused on the roof. And we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Uh, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would defer to the judge for this board. Uh, this went through a BPA-led community process, uh, involving a public meeting back in October seventeenth of twenty twenty-four. Ultimately, it was board-approved on December twelfth. Uh, we did hear from some residents' concerns regarding potential for, um, industrial noise. Uh, I just ask that the applicant continue to work with the community and be proactive. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Cindy from Counselor Flynn's office. Counselor Flynn would like to support the project. Thank you.
Um, Madam Chair, we have no reinstance at the moment.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mister Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mister Valencia?
Yes.
Mister Langham?
Yes.
Miss Weewell?
Yes.
Mister Collins?
Yes.
Miss Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
The next case has been deferred, so Madam.
So we will take a break until eleven thirty.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
Mr. Valencia.
Present.
Mr. Langham.
Present.
Ms. Weewell.
Present.
Mr. Collins.
Present.
Ms. Panado.
Present.
Thank you. The floor is yours, Mrs. Stemberge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And with that, we'll begin by asking if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 11:30 re-discussion time frame? Hearing none, we'll move on to case BOA 1653396 with the address of 302 Summit Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please apply to the board?
Good morning. My name is Derek Rubenoff. I'm Derek Rubenoff, architect, 82 Spring Street, West Roxbury, architect for the project, and our client is Emmetab Suare, who's also on the Zoom here. The project is pretty simple. It's an existing three-and-a-half-story, three-family. And what we'd like to do is finish out the existing attic as a fourth unit, and then dormer out at the sides of the attic to get a little more space up there. So we need relief to do that. We need relief for insufficient open space, insufficient parking. The use of four families forbidden, and we need relief for additional lot area, floor area ratio, building height stories, building height feet. I'll go over those. The particular, the parking for seven spaces are required for four units. As I mentioned, we already have three units. We have a two-car existing to remain garage in the back. If we go to the next page here, we can start to see some of these things. Right, so on the top left there, you can see the garage there that will remain, that's got two spaces, and then there's room for two cars outside the garage there as well. So we have four, basically you can get four cars on this site. We have a shared driveway as well on the left. So we're missing spaces for three cars, although again, we're within walking distance of public transportation. The, if we look at the area that's required, floor area ratio, the maximum is .8. Our existing gross floor area is 4,823 square feet, so the existing FAR is 1.05. We're already over a little bit. And the proposed GFA, we're adding a fourth-floor unit here, so we're adding the total, including the circulation errors outside the unit, a fourth-floor, 1,543 square feet, so the total proposed GFA becomes 6,366 square feet, so an FAR that's proposed of 1.39. And the height, we're not actually making the building taller. The height is there because of the dormers that we're adding. The existing building height is over the allowable height of 35 feet, so it's the addition of dormers which will not be higher than the existing peak of the roof. But nonetheless, they need relief for height in feet. And then the fourth floor here, the attic, will be more than 50% of the gross floor area of the floor below, so then therefore it becomes a fourth story. We need that relief for stories as well. We go to the next slide here. Yep, okay. Let's keep going through here. Yeah, proposed life safety plans. Here are the plot plans. The project is oriented differently on this sheet, so the Summit Avenue is at the top instead of the bottom, so the front is at the top of the page here. And that's existing. Let's go to the next slide. So again, there's no change in footprint to the building. So we're adding a fourth unit to this fairly dense neighborhood, but we're not changing the amount of space on the site that the project would take up. You can see the dormer layouts on this, dashed. The building already has some existing dormers. We're taking one of them up a little higher and adding sheds on both sides. So on the left side there of that plan, a small dormer will be replaced by a shed dormer that extends most of the length of the building. Let's go to the next slide, please. There's no work proposed on the first or second floors or in the basement. Basement will remain unfinished. Let's go to the next slide. And you can see, these are demo plans, so we're demolishing parts of the roof to allow for new dormers. We're demolishing, this time, the, the front of the building is at the bottom of the screen, so there's a small dormer on the right that we're demolishing and replacing by a larger one. And the existing gable dormer on the left will be demolished and replaced in kind with another gable dormer that's higher. And then we'll have a shed dormer inside it. We'll see that on coming pages. Let's go to the next slide. Thanks. And again, no work on the first or second floor or in the basement. These are the proposed plans. Let's go to the next slide. So on the left is the third floor. Minor work on the third floor with the front stair. Extending that front stair up to the attic. The back stair already goes up to the attic. And then the center plan there is the proposed four floors, so we'll have a nice living space in the front, and we'll have three bedrooms in the back, two bathrooms, and that stair in the back already goes up there. So on the right, you can see the proposed roof plan, so that gable dormer that's at the top of the bay, at the top left of that roof plan, that will go up a little higher, be built in kind. And we'll have a shed dormer that extends toward the front off that. And on the left side, we have a full-length shed dormer, but we set it back about four feet from the front so that it doesn't look awkward. Let's go to the next slide. These are proposed eleva, ah, sorry, these are the demo elevations. Let's go to the next slide. Proposed elevations. You can see the dormers, 2D views there. Let's go to the next slide. That's a section. We have ample headroom that we were providing with the dormery. Let's go to the next slide. And the next slide. Yeah, these are the 3D views. So what you're seeing here, on the left are the existing photos, and you can see that the house is up a little bit from the street. And then on the right, in the center, is computer model of the existing conditions, and on the right are the proposed conditions. So the dormers on the top right, you can see that's a full-length dormer, although it's set back a little bit, about four feet from the front, so there's no change to the front facade of the building. And in the bottom right, you can see the left side, the dormers there, and you can see how we grew the dormer at the top of the back bay window there, just by a few feet, and extended a shed of that.
Are there questions from the board?
I just actually want to quickly add that we presented to, we had the Butters meeting on the 24th of October, and then we presented to the BAAIA on December 5th, where we received a favorable recommendation from BAAIA. And we have a letter of support for the neighbor on the left at 300 Summit.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson at the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on October 24th, at which no concerns were raised. They coordinated to present to the Brighton-Aleston Improvement Association, which is supportive of the proposal. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a raised hand here. Judith, are you looking to give testimony here on this proposal?
Yes, I am. I live on Woods Avenue at the top, at number three. I'm very close to the top. I have concerns about, well, right now I have to say, walking by there, I have not found a property to be well-maintained in the winter with ice still early, over the weekend on their sidewalks. I'm not sure how they will actually dress us better. I'm more concerned about the parking. I don't know if anybody's ever come around here and tried to park after 6 o'clock at night. You know, you can't, and they're already pushing people out onto the street conceivably if you have three bedrooms, and if these are rentals, and I don't know, I think that seems to be what it is. We're hearing people walking by, or at least some of them are. There's just no parking around here. So instead, we're going to add a whole other floor with three more bedrooms, assuming if you're already under-parking for what you need, it's going to be impossible. You're pushing me as a homeowner for 22 years to think of moving out of this neighborhood, which I adore. So I am proposing this very strongly. I know the other unit owners are proposing it strongly also.
Thank you.
I'm not sure I thought, oh, we just had another raised hand. I'll just, Judith, okay. No additional raised hands, thank you.
Am I able to respond to?
Briefly.
We are about four blocks away from the Washington Street T Station on the green line, so we anticipate that occupants will make good use of public transportation, which is very close.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval, provided that the plans be submitted to the Department of Parks and Recreation for review. It's right next to Hone and Park, I believe.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia. Are you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1663221 with the address of 36 Wildwood Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please apply to the board?
Thank you, Ms. Stemberge. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street, here on behalf of the applicant, Samuelani, for 36 Wildwood Street in Dorchester. The proposal is to change the occupancy. It's an existing three-family building, and to convert the basement unit to a residential unit, an additional one-bedroom, one-bath unit. Everything, the contours of the building would remain exactly the same, so height, size, scope, just utilizing space to create additional units within the building, which is something that I know in the BPDA recommendation for approval that they want to see. We actually, in doing this, we actually create by building out this basement space, which right now is just has a utility room in. Utility room would remain. If we can go to the next slides, Madam Ambassador. Yeah, if you keep going, yeah, so this shows the layout. So utility room would have its own entrance. The new proposed basement unit has a significant grade change in the building, so it's really above-grade. You can walk out in the rear. We also created an additional egress on the side. Right now, there's a very narrow driveway that isn't used. It's only seven feet wide. There's an old garage in the back. We're actually raising that structure and creating open space and green space in the rear of the property as part of the proposal. So there'd be a new egress. The basement level would be sprinklered. Ceiling height is seven foot six. It's about slightly under 500 square-foot units, so one bedroom, one bath. All of the building above would remain. Those are multifamily now. And this is actually used as a family building, so the owner's family is from the neighborhood and uses many of the units, and this is just a way to create an additional unit. And as I mentioned, that would be a one-bedroom, one-bath. We did, we had no issues with the Butters in a Butter meeting, and with that, I can answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
So, Madam?
Yes. Mr. Collins?
Sorry, Madam Chair. I actually don't have this on my list, so I don't believe I looked at drawings for this.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Mattapan Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting held on September 5th, with very few voters in attendance who wanted to voice support. The project was then presented to Wichita Avenue Neighborhood Association, who voted to oppose the project, citing an inaccessible driveway, not owner-occupied, and a need for a sprinkler system. Thank you for your time, and the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council of Warr's office? Yes, hi, thank you, everyone. Anastasia again from Council of Warr's office. I just wanted to reiterate that we feel this should be deferred for further community engagement based on the valid complaints expressed by the community, including the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council, about concerns about not being owner-occupied, as well as the unit entrance and the sprinkler system as well. So we'd love to hear these addressed. Thank you.
So, actually, Madam Chair, if I may speak.
Well, can I just finish public comment, and then we can come back to you?
We have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Okay, Mr. Drago?
Sure. So these actually were addressed, so it's not typical. Obviously, these aren't building plans, so when the final set of building plans is, they'll show a sprinkler plan. We did voice that the unit be sprinklered. It's required by building code. We actually have multiple, so we're creating, we have four different ways of egress. Window egress, rear egress, front egress, and side egress. That's all created. There were questions around whether that garage in the rear could be taken down, and we said we would create open space with it. So we really addressed any of the issues. I don't think a further community process. We had the Butter meeting. There was support. I just don't think it would change anything, or there was nothing that was not left unaddressed at that meeting.
Can we hear from Mr. Hampton on this, the recommendations about increasing the amount of usable open space? I want to hear better what their concerns are.
They supported it. Ms. Panado?
What's some provisos? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Mr. Hampton is not on?
I'm sorry, Ms. Panado. Sorry about that. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, City of Austin Planning Department. For Wildwood, our only concerns were the sprinkler system. So, and the ceiling height, which, you know, would be addressed through IASD's review through the building plan. So we didn't really have any concern about the open space. Our concerns were about life safety issues.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
But we actually just answered your question, Ms. Panado, on open space by taking down that garage, which is actually not usable now. It's basically antiquated, it's a shack. We actually create an entire area, which is shown on the site plan, of new grain space in the back, which isn't there now.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I'm here to make a motion for approval with the provision that the plans should be submitted to the planning department for review and that there is an appropriate sprinkler system in basement height according to code.
May I have a second? Back end. Mr. Stemberge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1629989 with the address of 44 Creighton Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Hello, how you doing? My name is Xavier Sepulveda. I am the owner over at 44 Creighton Street. Just want to just kind of give a brief history of the property. So the project is the 44 Creighton, we're looking for relief on a renovation, extension of living space, and change of occupancy from a single family to a three-family. To give you a brief history, the property was purchased in 1992 by my mother, and then I purchased from her in 2021. So we've been owning this property for about 33 years now. The purpose of the relief would be for several reasons. The property is fairly old, over 100 years old now. We still use oil as heat for our main primary. We have issues with like electric and plumbing issues, and then a growing family as well. We seek relief to kind of essentially solve all those problems with granting housing for my parents, my siblings, as well as myself, and then also to the community and be able to provide housing to the community and to make a plan. The project's going to be three units, approximately 1,000 square feet each. The first floor is going to be a three-bedroom, 2.5 bath, and then the second and third floor is going to be two-bedroom, two-bath. We have six violations on this on this project, three of them which are pre-existing nonconforming. The other two, which would be open usable space and front and side yard, which I believe we are advised those because of the nature of the project that we're trying to do. The goal here was essentially trying to blend as much as possible, the three family, in accordance with the other three families that are in the area, especially 46 Creighton Street, which you see here on the on the presentation, if you scroll down there. I'm not sure if I could do that. They're the one nearest to us, they're a three-family. We want to make sure that we kind of fit kind of that outline. And there's also other three families behind, directly behind us and on the curve of 40, of Creighton Street, that we want to make sure we kind of blend the property with as much, the property which as much as possible. Yeah.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Jamaica Plain Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting held on September 10th with split stances. Abutters who won support did voice concerns regarding trash storage and parking, with other abutters opposed regarding construction and timeframe. The project was then presented to Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, who voted to approve the project. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Sally, have a good testimony here?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm here on behalf of my in-laws, who are at 40 Creighton Street, the next-door neighbors of Xavier's family. They've been neighbors with his parents Dwight and Daisy for about 20 years. And they attended the Butters meeting in the fall and they expressed thought, but due to illness, they can't be here. Basically, their concern is that over the years, they've had somewhat of a casual relationship over the driveway access. And I think Dwight and Daisy's cars to exit, the cars all these years have basically exited onto Chuck and Mary Ann's property. With the construction and the future kind of expansion of the property from one to three-family, Chuck and Mary Ann feel generally supportive of having the family be able to stay as a family in the property. However, they can't really imagine, how can the construction vehicles get back? My mother-in-law is also in hospice, and so with all of the large construction going on, it just, it seems like that there's no way to actually get vehicles to the back of the property where the construction's going to happen. As well as, I think the description of the property in the fall meeting was that there would be room for three parked cars. But Chuck and Mary Ann would rightfully be able to just put up a fence again because they took it down years ago so Dwight and Daisy could open their cars, but there, there's this concern about the scope of the property and the impact on the driveway access.
Thank you.
We have no additional raised hands at the moment.
I just wanted to make sure I kind of addressed that and make sure that we clarify just kind of the driveway space. So from one of the driveways, we always had a driveway at 44 Creighton Street, and I believe Chuck and Mary Ann never had a driveway, and I believe they went through the city to try and get that approved. And it's actually the other way around, in which we took down our fence, which is on our property, which still exists to the backside of the fence, which was a metal gated fence that we removed. That was one thing, and we, now we share kind of a driveway space. It's kind of a shared space, so when they come up on our driveway, they're coming up on ours, and we go and we go on theirs. The relationship, I mean, they've been there for about 22, 24 years now. They've kind of seen us grow and essentially, you know, from when we were kids at that point. We do keep in mind, we want to make sure we're there as comfortable as possible. There, one of the other Butters that we had to make sure that we kind of ensure full-on communication with them because of what Mary Ann is going through, what they're going through at this time. But I do want to make sure that that is clarified, that the driveway is a shared space, and it's kind of a point in our relationship where we know to take care of them, that when we do get an actual construction timeline, which we don't at all, and I know that was another concern from Mary Ann and Chuck as well, which was, when is this going to happen? At what time? Are you going to be in communication with us? And right now, we kind of, we don't really have a lot of that, which is kind of following the processes and making sure that we do this kind of step by step. And then if we do get to that point, and when we do, we know, myself, my mom, my stepdad, all of us, we know we're going to make sure that we communicate with Mary Ann and Chuck about things going forward. Again, like, it's just, it's a, they've seen us grow up, and we see where they're at now, you know, their grandchildren and everything. And we're definitely going to make sure that the process for them is as best as we can make it as best as possible.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with with BPDA Design Review, special attention to open space and distance from neighborhood structures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia. Mr. Valencia. Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes, sorry, my internet is malfunctioning.
All good. If you need to go off camera, just let us know. The chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members.
Next, we have case BOA 1584253 with the address of 214 Kenton Road. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Timothy Fraser from the law firm Dane Torby, 175 Federal Street, Boston. On the line as well is my colleague Jesse Shonar, also from Dane Torby, as well as the applicant John Temabogalos of 214 Kenton, 2 through 14 Kenton. So this matter involves 214 Kenton Road in Jamaica Plain. And for those who are not familiar, this is the site of the historic Haddaf Service Station. You can see the aerial view of the site plan on the screen there. The applicant is seeking here to extend the conditional use permit that the board granted in May of 1989 to allow the applicant to construct an additional covered gas pump island as well as other site improvements and landscaping. And I should mention that the existing building at the rear of the site will also be raised as part of a separate short form, short form permit that the applicant has applied for. Because the existing gas station use is allowed by a conditional permit, zoning relief is required to expand the use, and so that's why we're before the board today. And just some history on the permitting of this business, the board, this board granted a conditional use permit, and that permit was required because the proposed at the time service station was 100 feet from the residential area, and it remains 100 feet from a residential area today. So the first conditional permit was granted in 1981, and that was for three years. The then owners came back in 1984 and got another extension of that conditional use for another three years. And then in May in 1989, the then owner came before the board again, and at that time, the conditional permit was extended indefinitely. So since that time, Haddaf's has been operating in the neighborhood. And again, you know, the site is familiar to Boston residents. It's actually the first service station to open in Forest Hills, and it remains one of the last independent gas stations in Forest Hills. So for the past almost 45 years, they've been providing that community benefit. Haddaf's gas prices are typically five to 20 cents less than a big oil conglomerate gas prices, so it continues to provide that community benefit. Now, the current owner, the applicant, began leasing the property from Mr. Haddaf about 22 years ago, and then ended up purchasing it and has been operating the business for about 22 years. The site is approximately 32,200 square feet, and you can see there in the site plan, it has frontage on three streets, Washington Street to the left of your screen, as well as Rock Vale Circle, and then Kenton Road towards the bottom of the screen. It's located squarely in an automotive industrial district. All of the businesses around it, to the left and right of it on Washington Street, have always been some type of automotive business, one or another, of one kind or another. Right now, we're currently flanked by a auto collision repair and painting business, and then another auto repair business on the other side. So it's just a few of these local businesses that remain. Ours is one, but we're looking to make some site improvements so that we can bring some much-needed sprucing to this area. And the additional pumps also solve a couple of neighborhood issues. First, you know, they, the additional pumps are aiming to prevent queuing that sometimes occurs on Washington Street. You can see, you know, the entrances on Washington Street are the ones that are primarily used to exit and enter the property. The station, having additional pumps will help move those customers faster to try to prevent that queuing. But also even without queuing on Washington Street, as everyone knows, you know, you leave the car running while you're waiting for a pump to be active. So we're hoping to move customers faster with these improvements of the additional pumps. In addition, those pumps will all have contact-less payment systems, so that we're preventing customers from spending a lot of time there, walking to the building to pay and then walking back to pump. The new canopy system also offers state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art lighting system, so we can dim them and brighten them depending on what time of day it is or how much light is needed. And of course, when the gas station is closed, there's a security setting for dimming as well. The site upgrades include new fire protection systems for that canopy, new security cameras, so that all areas of the parking lot are monitored. And we actually know from the neighborhood, which I'll get to in a second, from speaking with the neighborhood, we know that that was one of the concerns. Lastly, I had mentioned earlier that the proposal includes demolition of the existing building that's on the site, and that that building houses a lottery and keynote business that's been there for years. So this portion of the business, actually, we think may be the culprit of some of the loose trash and lottery tickets. So when this building goes, that business will go with it, as will the lottery tickets, the cigarette wrappers, and all the other things that the owner has been trying to keep control of. In its place, we'll have new fencing, new landscaping, and new screening from the Butters on, particularly on the residential side of the site, and you can see that towards the bottom of the site plan there. In the fall, we held an Butters meeting in conjunction with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We also met with the Stony Brook Neighborhood Association and the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. And we did receive concerns from the Butters, and those concerns were echoed by the associations. And I believe the board has those letters on file. Much of the concerns were with regard to the operations of the business, lighting, trash, timing of tanker deliveries, snow removal, and noise from the customers, although there was the expected opposition to the expansion as a whole. The Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services determined that the meetings that we held sufficed as the required community engagement, and so we were scheduled for a hearing on November 26, 2024. However, we appeared before the board that day requesting a deferral, and that was based on concerns raised by the Butters. Of our 74 Butters on our Butters list, we particularly wanted to address the concerns raised by the direct Butters at 9 through 11 Kenton Street, which is right across the street. It's kind of at the bottom of the site plan. You can't quite see the residents, as well as 18 Kenton, which is there just to the right of the bottom of the site plan. And so we met in January 2025 after we requested that deferral, and we met with those particular Butters and we tried to address those concerns, and we presented the new landscape program that you see before you, which proposed to close a curb cut, the one closest to them on Kenton Road. So that's where you see that kind of lone shrub there with the curved area. And then we added additional screening and buffering. And so while we couldn't satisfy every concern, of course, we do feel that this time that the project is appropriate to bring before the board. I'd also like to note to the board that the planning department has recommended this project for approval. The site is right in the middle of an auto-oriented business cluster, and, you know, the board's memo notes that, you know, while expansion of gas stations is something normally that they approved during the city, they recognize in this specific case, the nature of this historic business, locally-run business at that, it does support the mayor's goals for keeping those types of small businesses running. And as we all know, the advent of electrification, this business is, you know, certain for demise in a number of years. So in closing, Madam Chair, we ask that the board support this proposal to continue one of the last historic small businesses in the area and grant approval for the project. Because the proposed gas station is really already existing, we're just looking to add an additional pump canopy, and it's sited in a cluster that's all automotive uses. And because we're providing site improvements that benefit the community, we think that we do meet the requirements of the zoning code for approval of the conditional permit. Thank you, and I take the board's questions or any items of clarification that you might have.
Mr. Fraser, can you, can you direct us to a slide that shows us visually where this new pump station or island would be situated? How close is it to its nearest Butter? I think that's 18 Kenton.
Here, I could, if you want to slide back up, Madam Ambassador, to the, yeah, so it'd be that canopy that's to the right. You see one sort of larger canopy, we'll call it, that's the existing, and then the canopy to the right, you can kind of see a gray outline of where the, that L-shaped existing building that's going to be raised, and then the newer canopy will go in its place. So sort of just slightly over that gray area, that building that would be raised. So your closest Butter would So your closest abutter would be eighteen Kenton, and that's the row of shrubbery that you see, the house to the right of that.
Madam Chair, at twenty-three feet.
Twenty-three feet, thank you. And you mentioned queuing on Washington. Do you have any particular data around, you know, how often the current pumps are at capacity and/or overflowing to kind of explain the addition of double the pumps?
Yeah, I can explain that the nature of the business, Madam Chair, is sort of, I'll call it shift and cyclical, if you will. So the majority, you know, of the traffic clusters would occur, let's say, between the hours of, you know, seven and ten for those workers and people heading to work. Then you might have another busy section that might occur in the middle of the afternoon. And then, well, for the commute home, maybe five to six-thirty or seven. So as far as data, I don't have any specific data, but I could tell you that those would be the larger operations. And I know that the owner is on the line if he has any additional items to add with regard to, respect to the specific busy times. But that's the information that we have as far as traffic for now.
Okay, and in the comments that we've received, and a number of them mentioned a development proposal also being proposed to the site, for the site. Can you clarify?
Yes.
Whatever development proposal?
Sure, so the proposal that, and I'm not engaged to work on that proposal, Madam Chair, so I apologize, I don't have too much detail. I can tell you that that is a proposal that involves several sites. This one, as well as several adjacent sites to this. It has been submitted for a large project review. But other than that, it does not, it's not in place of the current owner's proposed plans for expansion during the last few years of this business.
So just to follow up on that, so the, your client, I suppose, has agreed to either sell or work with this developer who also has a proposal to develop the gas station site in an adjacent site. So there's already an agreement, I am asking, between your client and the new owner that would develop the site into a larger residential project?
Now, Ms. Panado, unfortunately, I'm sorry. I don't have that level of detail as far as the nature of site control as it relates to that, to that other project. I apologize.
But it's clear that there's a proposal to build a new development at this gas station, at the same time, a proposal to expand the gas station.
And there's a proposal to develop housing in this area on sites that include this. And that proposal is, has been submitted and reviewed to the BPDA, but that's as far as it's gone thus far.
Your Hampton, you may be able to shed light on this.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. I can state and, you know, confirm what Mr. Fraser has said, that a development has been submitted. It's nowhere close to being done. And it is going to be a multi-building, multifamily, even commercial uses within that stretch of Washington Street. If you get exactly, I think it's thirty-four thirty, thirty-four forty, Washington. And it's under review right now, but it's at the preliminary stages or very early stages. I shouldn't say preliminary because it has been submitted, but it has, we have begun the large project review under Article eighty. But the BPDA's, sorry, the City of Boston's planning recommendation on this is geared toward the immediate appeal and proposal. It has nothing to do with that one. That will most likely, and I'm guessing, to be honest with you, will be before you once it goes through the full Article eighty proposal. But, Ms. Panado, yes, there has been a proposal submitted for a couple of sites, this one included. But that review hasn't been done yet.
Well, do you have a timeline on that? Because these sound interrelated.
Uh, no.
And I should confirm, Madam Chair, that they are not interrelated. You know, other than that, you know, the proposed development that's undergoing Article eighty review seeks to assemble parcels that include this one.
So there's no agreement between the owner and that proposal, that's what you're saying?
Well, that would be highly unusual.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I wish I could give you the exact answer to that. I don't want to misspeak. I don't want to say whether or not there is an, I just do not know.
Round robin.
And I know, yep.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
I have, I have a small, a small question. Was my concern, I'm familiar with that area. Have they looked into the foot traffic? Because there's a lot of foot traffic going past that gas station.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes, we know that pedestrian safety is a concern. If you could go back to the curb kite, rather, the curb, the site plan slide. Why do that? Primarily, the area of traffic, as you know, Mr. Langham, is right up and down Washington Street. So what we did propose actually was to close an additional curb cut on Kenton. That would be the one that's right at Kenton and Washington. And what we're trying to do is, you know, obviously reduce the areas that are not sidewalks. So, you know, we're happy to consider that in design review if that make the project more palatable to the board. But as of now, we have considered closing that curb cut that runs from Kenton to Washington, and particularly thinking about pedestrian safety when we're doing that. And so we're certainly willing to consider that further.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Madam Chairman, I turned the internet on. I can't wait off because my internet is not working well. I just wanted to mention that there are, we received several letters of opposition from residents in the area.
You're going in and out, but I think you were common. You kind of cut in and out, Mr. Valencia.
I'm sorry, ma'am. It's about the letters of opposition and the comments from the community. About traffic impact, the high school is across the street, and there will be additional contamination for the residents who live right next door too. So I just wanted to mention that from the comments we received.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Valencia. And those are the comments that we received when we went first before the neighborhood and also before the abutters the first and the second time. And again, we tried to mitigate the effects of that. I think what we were aiming to do by moving, this proposal is not likely to bring any more customers to our gas station, right? It's, you know, the gas station is there. What we're trying to do is get people in and out in a smoother fashion to reduce idling and to reduce admissions and to reduce those, you know, perceived health effects or health effects that the abutters discussed. So we did discuss that with them in our meeting.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yes, please. So if I'm hearing this correctly, this expansion will be temporary in that there will be another development that will come along whenever to replace, to replace what's there now. Is that correct?
Other than the characterization of it being temporary, sir, Mr. Stembridge, I think that, you know, the intention here is that this would be a site upgrade to this existing gas station for as long as is there. And in the event that that Article eighty project doesn't go through, for example, this business will remain for as long as the combustion engine remains, however long that is. So I wouldn't necessarily call it temporary, but the spirit of what you're saying is correct, that this expansion will precede whatever development is being planned for the same site and adjacent sites.
And remain in place until something changes?
That's correct. And so to further clarify, there's nothing about it that's temporary in nature. The structure is permanent. You know, everything about it is permanent, sir.
Okay, other questions from the board? Let's open this up to public comment, and I'll just start by saying we have received by email a number, many emails of opposition.
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Jamaica Plain Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting on April twenty-ninth, where all the abutters at that time and participants were opposed to the project for reasons ranging from parking, traffic issues that already exist due to the busy gas stations that in their own increased traffic, as well as all levels of pollution from gas odor emissions. Our director abutters immediately across from the property report light from vehicles, pollution, violence, noise, and lastly, vehicles jumping over Garland or Washington to enter the Kenton Road curb cut, which most of the abutters address as a very dangerous curb cut. The project was then presented to both Stony Brook Neighborhood Association and the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, where they voted unanimously in opposition of the project regarding concerns of increased fossil fuel emissions from more pumps. There was also some confusion over the planning department proposal at thirty-four thirty dash thirty-four forty Washington Street, which is a two-hundred-and-fifty-six unit housing project proposed on the same site as the gas station. Our office has also received twenty-three letters in opposition for the proposal. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Jordan Fraser from Council Weber's office. Council Weber would like to go on record in opposition to this proposal. The abutters remain opposed to this expansion at Haddaf's to add additional gas pumps. The conditions of the neighborhood have changed dramatically from nineteen eighty-nine, when the conditional use permit was issued. The neighborhood has become less industrial, more residential. There is a proposed development at this exact site going through the Article eighty process with the planning department, which proposes raising the gas station and constructing mixed-use residential, commercial, multifamily buildings. It's important to note that the other auto businesses nearby, including Keegan's and AACME, are also under review or have recently been approved for new housing construction. So again, Council Weber urges the board to oppose the variances before you today. Thank you.
Any other Councilman offices? So I'll go to Joshua Haynes and then Emily.
Thank you. My name is Josh Haney. I live directly across Kenton Road at eleven Kenton Road. We're directly across from the rear of the property, where the current buildings are proposed to be demolished and replaced by gas pumps. This proposal is directly contradictory to the current thoughtful conditional use permit. That existing conditional use permit confined the gas pumps to the front of the property along Washington Street precisely to keep them away from residences. It limited the hours of operation from seven AM to seven PM. It noted at the time that there was no cut-through along Kenton Road to the rest of the neighborhood and Morton Street, the way there is now. And it was issued when the Washington Street corridor was fully industrial. There are changed circumstances, significant ones, and the permit explicitly envisioned a time when use of a gas station would no longer be appropriate. Abutters and neighbors will be harmed if this expansion is allowed. No matter what the owners do about the gas station lights, headlights at the rear of the property will shine directly into the living rooms at two residences at nine and eleven Kenton Road. The gas fumes from the pumps and the cars will be much closer to us. The noise will be louder from radios and engines because it will be closer, and the current buildings act as a barrier. There will be more traffic. I don't think this will make less traffic. I think that that argument has proven to be wrong whenever you expand a highway. It doesn't make the traffic flow better. It just encourages more car use. For these reasons, the criteria for a conditional use permit under Article six dash three have not been met. We're asking the board to deny this. If the board were to consider allowing it with conditions, it certainly shouldn't go beyond the current conditions. Those include the seven AM to seven PM restriction on hours of operation. Unfortunately, the owner is operating from six AM to eleven forty-five PM, which causes us a significant problem. So this board could certainly remind the owner that they must operate within the existing conditions. Also, we would ask if you were going to allow with conditions to require all curb cuts on Kenton Road be closed. I will note in response to Attorney Fraser that they offered to close the existing curb cut on Kenton close to Washington. They, their position to the abutters was that they would only close that if we agreed to support this proposal. So I just want to clarify the record on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes, thank you to the board for hearing my testimony today. My name is Emily McGinnis, and I reside at eleven Kenton Road. I'm also a direct abutter to Haddaf's gas station. Haddaf's is a nuisance. It adversely impacts our lives with trash, light, noise, and air pollution. And a fueling station is no longer in appropriate use for this site and should not be expanded. Haddaf sits across from the English High playing field and abuts our homes and the negative environmental and health impacts of residing, learning, and playing in proximity to a gas station. We are moving away from reliance on fossil fuels. And as an example, Massachusetts plans to ban gas powder cars by twenty thirty-five. A feat of our walkable, viable neighborhood is its access to excellent public transportation, and it is increased housing, not an expanded gas station, that aligns with the aspirations of our community and increases the overall livability of the area, both stated goals of Plan JP Rocks. Mr. Fraser said Haddaf sits squarely in a group of auto industries, and the same mischaracterization is in the planning department's recommendation. It cites Haddaf's location in the middle of an auto business cluster as evidence of appropriate use. But in fact, this entire cluster of three businesses, including Haddaf's itself, as you have heard, is currently and appropriately being planned for residential development. A proposal at neighboring thirty-four fifty Washington Street was just approved by the planning board to replace Keegan's Auto Repair with thirty-six residential dwellings. And as direct abutters, we will support the required variances when that proposal comes before this board. And then you've been the address of thirty-four forty Washington Street. Haddaf's gas station, together with Acme Auto Body, has this parallel development for over two hundred residences, which would add needed housing to our community, including many affordable units. And as direct abutters, we support the latest iteration of those plans. There's an argument being made that these separate proposals for expansion and the residential development have nothing to do with one another, but they are absolutely related. They will both impact our lives and our community. When we part our curtains in the morning, our view is Haddaf's. We do not want to be made to endure two rounds of construction several years apart, the first of which proposes to bring the impacts of Haddaf's operation even closer to our home. My family and I support housing for this site, for our neighborhood and for our city. We are daily impacted by and witnesses to the negative effects of this gas station's operation. And we respectfully ask for my appeal for gas station expansion. Thank you.
Hi, phone user? You looking to give testimony on this proposal?
Hello?
Yes.
My name is Kaliga. I am on the steering committee. I live down the street from Haddaf's. We do get our gas there because we have a combustion engine for our car. I live on Burnett Street, but I'm often in that neighborhood. And I'm on the steering committee of the Stony Brook Neighborhood Association, as well as a member of the JP Neighborhood Council. And this has been disingenuous because, as Emily was saying, they fully intend to operate this for about two to three years if you allow these extra pumps. And then the owner is going to be selling out to make a bundle on this new big development. So this is just to get as much money out of the gas industry. We proposed at an S and A meeting that they instead install EV stations for charging. And they just shut that right down. So they have been very bad neighbors. We have not been able to speak with the owner once. And they've been bad neighbors with just the number of pumps that they have now. So, yes, the JP Neighborhood Council and the S and A. And I sent a personal letter. We do not support this at all.
Two additional raised hands, Michael Babcock. Who are going to give testimony here?
Thank you. Yes, Michael Babcock and Denise Feeny. We live at eighteen Kenton Road here. The property, the residential property directly adjacent to the rear of Haddaf's currently. The, this is a terrible proposal. Shame on whoever approved this back in nineteen eighty-one and continued to approve it conditionally.
and continued to approve it conditionally. So many things, I mean, Mr. Frazier has glossed over a number of points. He did not mention that this would be a 66% increase in pump capacity. Right now, the station sells 10,000 gallons a day. That's 200 tons of CO2 a day. So this is an environmental disaster. They would, you know, the proposal would be a 66% increase, 116,000 gallons of gas a day, et cetera, et cetera. We do not want to be exposed to more hydrocarbons and benzene. Our neighbor at 20 Kenton Road has a brain tumor. Correlation is not causation. Nevertheless, we live in fear of being poisoned by this station. The capacity will not lower the amount of traffic. It will only encourage additional traffic. And on and on and on. This is a terrible proposal. We...
Thank you.
No additional raised hands at the moment. Oh, one hand just popped up. Let me take that.
Did I, did you hear me? Did I, just as I talked me into the point?
Keep going. Okay, we had three additional hands pop up. Christina, you can give us no information? Give your name, address, any information?
Hi, yep, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm Christina Toby and I'm a direct abutter at 9 Kenton Road. We share a property with Joshua Haney and Emily McGinnis. And I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and also state that I am opposed to this. I hope that the board will vote against it. I know that Attorney Frazier said that this will reduce traffic, reduce idling. Cars sit there. They're not all in, just in traffic. Cars just stay there. They play music, they're hanging out. It's not, adding additional pumps isn't going to make a difference. Also, he mentioned that there'll be like payment on the pump. They already have that. And people walk around. It's cheaper to pay cash, which I understand. So there's no window that will be open on the side where the pumps are. It's going to stay on the opposite side if people walk around to pay and leave their cars in the back. I think, I just want to highlight something that Emily McGinnis mentioned, that the support from, I think it was the planning department, was stated about there being businesses in the area that are auto-related. The property adjacent to the Keegan's property was just approved. So that's going away right now. That, so being an auto area is not, not something that I think should make it pass.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Okay, one second. I, okay, Bill?
Is there additional raised hands after this? I would ask you to put it in the comments. We've received a lot of responses by email, so I think we do got the gist. Jessica, you have one more?
Hi, Bill Relk, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My wife and I own 24 Kenton Road, a three-family. That is the third property behind Haddaf's on Kenton Road. While we don't currently live there, we lived there for seven years and we have long-term tenants and we care a lot about the neighborhood. We strongly oppose the expansion of the gas station facilities and services at this site. It seems in direct conflict with the primary goals and objectives of Plan JP Rocks, which was born out of a recognition of the area's location along one of the region's major transit corridors and the importance of updating the very dated zoning so as to encourage uses and densities that take advantage of the proximity to transit and transit, with transit, pedestrian-oriented, mixed-use development in these relatively scarce locations. I can't even believe we're frankly considering this. You know, the notion that somebody would upgrade, you know, I just ask, I just throw out the question. I mean, when has anyone seen a, this is essentially going to be a new gas station. When has anyone seen a new gas station replaced, you know, within a matter of a few years with new mixed-use development? I mean, if this goes forward, it'll be decades before we see, you know, housing dense, you know, appropriate uses, uses that are appropriate for this location. There are appropriate sites for gas stations and they are not in, you know, very dense residential areas, you know, with unique locational characteristics with respect to heavy rail transit. So I just think that the notion of doubling down on gas facilities at this location doesn't make any sense. And I agree with everything else my neighbors have said in terms of, you know, the idea that this is because you're going to have more pumps and that's going to result in less use of this area, less fewer customers, is just patently absurd. And not to mention all the issues we've had with this operator in the past.
Thank you. If there are other comments, please put them in the chat. I will give Mr. Frazier a moment to respond.
Great, so I have some, okay. So first, Madam Chair, I just want to make it clear that that second proposal that's before the PPDA is independent of this. And I just request that the board take a look at the proposal that is in front of it, which relates only to this conditional use permit. And so, you know, with that as a backdrop, I do want to take a bit of umbrage to the Stony Brook's characterization that we've been disingenuous. What we're going for today is an extension of the conditional use permit that was originally extended. Doesn't have anything to do with any proposed development. So I just want to make that clear to the board and ask that the board look at this proposal on its face by itself. I guess, going next to the abutters, you know, again, we anticipate opposition to the expansion of a gas station anywhere. The PPDA says in its on memo, rather, the planning department says in its on memo that it typically just, we would not grant something like this. But that in this particular case, considering the current situation of the site, we're not looking at 10 years down the road, what might be built there, what's considering to be built there. We're looking at the current state of the site. The abutters to the left, the abutters to the right are all automotive uses and that's consistent with the area. I think one, there was some mention made, Madam Chair, and I just want to, and I know that was short in time, so I just want to get some of the highlights of the hours of operation and some of the other items that the 1989 or the 1980s conditional permit was conditioned on. That's actually not accurate. That conditional permit stated those facts. At the time that the most recent conditional permit was extended, the hours were 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And the decision states the facts. The current hours are 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And some of the other additional facts that were listed in the decision. But at the bottom of the decision, the conditional permit was, extension was granted. And it wasn't granted with provisos on hours and it wasn't granted with provisos on location to the pumps. Those were just conditions of the site that were cited in the plan. And I would ask the board to take some time to review that decision if necessary to confirm that. Some of the other, again, I, and I said this when I first met with the Kenton Street abutters is that, you know, my practice style, we don't steamroll developments over people. But, you know, we do want to make sure that we have a collaborative environment and that uses that make sense for a particular site are allowed to go forward. The notion that there's going to be an increased pump capacity and that we didn't mention that and that was somehow disingenuous, we're asking for additional pumps. It's going to be more gas pumping. So there's nothing disingenuous about that and there's nothing that we tried to conceal that as well. So we understand the neighborhood's opposition. I was able to receive many of those letters in opposition in advance. Some are new. We do strive to work with the community with ONS to make sure that everybody's happy. But as you know, Madam Chair, that is a result that is seldom achieved. So we asked the board to take a look at this proposal on its face based on the site as it currently exists and allow an extension of the conditional use for the additional pump. I can also, I think Mr. Panato asked earlier whether or not the applicant has an agreement. I did get some contemporaneous information that there is no agreement. The applicant has no agreement with any other developer to dispose of the site. So again, this, as Mr. Hampton said, you know, that project separately and independent of this is in its very preliminary stages. These can take years. In the meantime, we want to ensure that this business stays and remains as a viable business, cleans up the site and addresses some of these concerns that the abutters in the neighborhood have concerns about.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the board? Hearing, hearing none, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I will put forth a motion of denial without prejudice. I'm just listening to the rationale. I think any expansion in this use by adding pumps is inherently a nuisance or will cause adverse impacts to abutters by allowing for more capacity for traffic to the site and combustible engines. And will kind of exasperate those negative externalities from gas-powered vehicles by going from six to 10 pumps. So for those reasons, I'm making a motion to deny without prejudice.
Wait a second.
That is.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board.
We do have one hearing scheduled for noon time. So I ask at this point if that case will go ahead or if we'll be withdrawn or deferred? Deferred?
Good afternoon, Mr. Stembridge. Attorney Richard Lins. I'm on the rehearing. We are planning to go forward.
Back to the attorney.
Thank you.
With that, we'll return to case BOA 1634764 with the address of 80 G Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. Madam Ambassador, could we just put the plans on the screen as well, please? Madam Chair, should I just, should I just go ahead until we get the plans? Or do you want me to wait?
Is there something missing?
I don't see the plans on the screen.
What do you see?
I'm just seeing a picture, an image of you.
Okay, that's odd there, I see them.
Okay, all right. As long as they're there, I'll continue to go then. That's perfect.
You may have to click where it says Victoria's screen. I think sometimes different screen views get popped up, but I'm not sure if that's...
All right, I'll just, I'll just, if the drawings are up there,
They are.
Trust you all, you can see them and I'll just continue to proceed. Okay, with me today is the owner Matt Ramy and the architect Gary Hendren. This is a proposal to add a three-story addition to the rear of an existing building on a corner lot to change the occupancy from three to six units with seven parking spaces. By way of history, this project was before this board on July 11, 2023 and was denied without prejudice. At that point in time, I was not representing this client. And again, there was a planning department recommendation at that point where the proponent was not made aware of, but has now been since aware and has addressed those concerns and hence the reason why they are back today. Further, there is a current recommendation from the planning department that cites some of those concerns once again. But this new revised proposal that you're seeing today addresses those concerns and I will speak shortly of those. This parcel consists of approximately 4,199 square feet and falls within an MFR sub-district. Five units will be two-bedroom, two-bathroom, and one unit will be two-bedroom, one-bath. All units will be ownership ranging from approximately 908 square feet to 1,225 square feet. The existing structure will house three units. In the addition, we'll provide for the grade-level parking surface and as well as covered parking, that is, and three additional units. Ground floor will consist of parking for the seven vehicles along with the bike storage room and a trash storage room. Unit one and unit two will be located on the first floor. Units three and four will be located on the second floor. And units five and six will be located on the third floor. Units five and six will also have an exclusive rights to a roof deck accessed by hatch, which will be centered in the middle of the building and not visible from the street. We have violations for the following. Additional lot area violation. The proposal is well-aligned with the surrounding context and the existing context where adjacent lots are already zoned for multifamily residences and would further help increase housing opportunities. Front yard violation. Five feet is required in this sub-district. And due to being a corner lot, the proposal has two front yard setbacks. G Street is pre-existing at three feet, four inches. And on Story Street, there is eight feet, eight-inch setback. I'd also like to mention that the proponent reduced the size of the curb cut and also increased the setback on Story Street to allow for adequate space for the minimum ADA-compliant sidewalks. Side yard violation. Proposal has a pre-existing setback of two feet, six inches on the right side, which slightly will be increased to two foot, eight inches while continuing down the lot to the rear. And at three feet is what is compliant within this sub-district. But also adding this type of setback is similar in this neighborhood. We have a rear yard violation. Twenty feet is required here, and the proposal is approximately five feet to the property line and approximately 15 feet away from the abutting structure. We have an open space violation. The open space requirement here is 200 feet per unit. But actually, this proposal calls for 210 square feet per unit, which we believe we were cited in error. We have an excess of pipe violation. Again, the existing structure is 43 feet and six inches, which is pre-existing violation where the code calls for 40 feet. The existing height of the structure will be maintained within the proposed addition. We have a roof structure restriction violation. We have actually two of those violations. One for altering the profile of the roof line and another one for raising the existing shed in the rear to provide the additional space for the addition. We have a violation for extension into the rear yard. The addition is more than 1,000 square feet, so relief is necessary. We also do have a parking design and maneuverability. We believe we were cited in error as this violation was cited within the first renderings. What you're seeing in the plans presented today, there is absent an elevator shaft that was originally factored into the plans. That elevator has been removed, which would improve the maneuverability, which would allow cars to fully maneuver on this parcel and proceed in a head-on direction. We are aware of the planning department's recommendation that is based on the original file set of plans and not the plans presented here today. I want to take a minute to discuss some of the concerns of the planning department to show the board the important changes made to address those concerns. We have the open space violation again. There should not have been an open space violation as this proposal calls for 215 square feet per unit. Also, the code is, you know, also the code requires the 200. In fact, our lock coverage for this proposal is 66% lock coverage. Also, there is no F A I. I'd just like to bring to your attention, there is no F A R violation with proposal. Again, the parking was reconfigured to allow for better maneuverability by eliminating the elevator. All cars can turn around entirely on this parcel and drive out of the driveway head-on. Permeable. Proponent would be amenable to providing a driveway that consisted of permeable pavers to assist with better drainage. However, this issue can be addressed during design review if in fact this proposal is approved. And then the last item that was spoken about in the planning department's recommendation was about the tree canopy. There is one existing tree in the rear of the property that abuts 82 G Street. And again, at the request of the abutting neighbors, this tree to be removed during the process. I also like to mention that went through an extensive community review where we do have the support of the abutting neighbors on 82 G Street and as well as the other immediate direct abutters on Story Street. Some of those are in attendance today, and you will hear from them. In concluding, we feel that this proposal satisfies the concerns from the planning department, aligns with the mayor's initiative increasing the housing stock, and provides a much better pedestrian safety with increased sidewalks and a reduced curb cut. At this point, Madam Chair, I'm going to turn it over to you and the board for any questions that come.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
I'd just like to hear from Mr. Hampton on to whether the recommendation changes based on what we just heard today.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, City of Boston, Planning Department. Yes, I can agree with Mr. Spitz on a lot of the changes that were addressed through our original recommendation on this. I understand that open space may be in error cited by ISD and that it was a major concern of ours in that open space and permeable area. When it comes to the existing tree, you know, you see our recommendation to keep it. However, I don't know, you know, if the abutter wants it gone. And I don't know how to address that issue. But as you saw in our recommendation hour, biggest concern was open space and permeable area. And from plans shown and from what Counselor Spitz has told us, they've addressed those issues that we had a major concern about. If the board sees that this proposal should move forward, we would request aggressive design review just to make sure that the statements that were made today indeed are reflected on the plan and that we can stamp off on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? May we have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ziggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on the 5th of September, at which many attendees raised concerns about what they viewed as poor conditions of the existing property, describing issues relating to vegetation overgrowth, storage of loose trash, and visible rodent burrows. Besides for one concern about the possibility of shadows being cast from the new design, all the concerns raised related to sanitation issues. There were no other comments about the zoning relief. The Dorchester Heights Neighborhood Association and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association are both supportive of the proposal. Our office has received three letters of opposition and seven form letters of support, which have been forwarded to the board. With that background, we defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica Doyle.
Hi, this is Sydney from Councilor Flynn's office. Counselor Flynn would like to go on record in opposition due to feedback from neighbors and abutters throughout the community process. Residents have called attention to the size of the project as well as South Boston's existing parking crisis due to the elimination of three garage spots while adding three additional units. Moreover, residents reported that they have not been a good neighbor and sent photos of issues related to trash removal while stating these concerns took place well before September move-in. Counselor respectfully requests that the board takes these concerns from the neighbors seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Murphy's office.
Hello and good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Ambassador, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Counselor Murphy is in support of this project, and thank you very much for your time and consideration. Thank you.
And the other counsel's office? If no, I'll turn it to Jessica Doyle.
Hello, I am Jessica Doyle. I'm on the property 11 Story Street, right next to 80 G Street. I feel like my grandmother also would like to speak as well. She borders the property between 11 Story and 80 G Street. The project would impact us the most. We are one of the closest neighbors. My house is the one that would be the one not getting as much sunlight. My grandmother already has like issues with their parking. I don't know if she would like to, would you like to speak as well?
I think there's, I think that there's going to be problems with the parking. And I'm not going to lose any of my parking. It's at the top of the hill, and G Streets are one-way. So you're gonna, you go down Story Street, the driveways are going to be right there, people pulling out to drive a little bit slower. My, that's my concern is the drop of the hill and the parking.
I would also like to mention that it is already difficult to pull out with the double parking that is already occurring with the garage with the units that the owner already has. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then J T Kelly?
Yep, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, so I think this has been carefully thought out. You know, I think it meets all the requirements for the parking in the area. There's a shortage of housing, you know, in that street. And I think developers have put together a good, you know, solution here. And I own a property on East Fourth Street where I live, so I'm in full support of this.
Thank you.
Have no additional raised hands at the moment.
I'm going straight. Any other questions from the board? Does the applicant want to address that feedback from your abutter?
Absolutely, yes. This is something that we did speak about. We are not going, so the abutter on Story Street had concerns about a retaining wall. It had concerns about a fence being put up. And the proponent has agreed to do such to maintain that retaining wall. So this property here, that the curb cut that's existing now is much larger in size. And again, Story Street, there is no parking on the street itself. So these cars will be pulling in off of Story Street to park. And again, with the maneuverability that was improved on this project, will be able to fully maneuver their own vehicles in here. So they won't be exiting by reversing out on the street. They'll be able to pull head-on. They will, will be sure to maybe add some additional signage if approved inside to ensure that when exiting, we can provide some sort of mirrors on the project as well. And maybe that can be respectfully reviewed during design review too, to ensure that the drivers are pulling out safely and looking carefully in the view of pedestrian safety crossing as well.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with.
Is there a second? Second. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1652033 with the address of 526 East Third Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. Joining me today is the owner Joseph Provinzano and the project architect Tim Johnson. The proposal here is seeking to erect a new four-story, three-unit dwelling with ground floor garage on a vacant corner lot consisting of approximately 1,020 square feet. The site is then a rectangular but is consistent with other row houses of a similar scale in this part of the neighborhood. I'd also like to just mention at this point, approximately about 50 or so years ago, there was a single-family structure on this lot that was burnt down in the fire. The ground floor will consist of parking for two vehicles. It will also contain a two-stop vertical lift for accessibility. Unit one, approximately 738 square feet, will contain one bedroom, one bath, located on the second floor. Unit two, approximately 803 square feet, will be a two-bedroom, one-bath, located on the third floor. Unit three, approximately 843 square feet, a two-bedroom, one-bath, will be located on the fourth floor. This unit will also have access by bulkhead with a roof door to an exclusive-use roof deck of approximately 12 feet by 12 feet that will be set back to the rear of the building. We have violations for the following. Insufficient lot size and additional lot size as the site consists of 1,020 square feet. And the proposal of this size would require 4,000 square feet, but the proposal is consistent with other row houses of similar scale within this neighborhood. We have an F A R violation as this proposal calls for a 2.8 as compared to a compliant 2.0 due to the small site, which is also similar to other sites and some of those sites with an even higher F A R in this neighborhood. Open space violation as we are required to provide 200 square feet per unit. But due to the small constraints, the proposal calls for 84 square feet per dwelling. We have a side yard violation. Three feet is required by code. This proposal has a setback of .3 on the left side and zero feet on the right side, but is contextual with the surrounding row houses in this neighborhood. We have a parking violation. Proposal provides two-car garage parking spaces and zoning calls for one space for a dwelling unit with one bedroom and 1.5 parking spaces per unit for anything more than a one-bedroom. However, this proposal is aligned with the mayor's initiative of reducing dependency on private vehicles. Even though this project exceeds dimensional regulations for the site, it adds housing units while maintaining the small footprint of the parcel while assisting with the city's planning goal of increasing the housing supply. At this point, Madam Chair, I'm going to turn it over to you and the board for any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
It doesn't look like it, but are there windows on the side of that adjacent building on East Third Street?
So I'm just going to have Tim, because I'm having trouble with my screen. Tim Johnson, the project architect, is probably better suited to answer that question at this point.
Yes, could we go back to the drawings by chance? This is Tim Johnson.
Ms. Panado, you're asking about adjacent property.
You could just answer the question.
Yeah, questions about adjacent property, not.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, the abutting property on East Third Street has one window that is a code violation. And we've, we're working closely with the abutter. That window goes into a hallway. It's not an egress window for a bedroom. So we are going to close that existing opening, which is only one opening on the abutted building on the right side of the, as the image you can see now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Ziggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on the 15th of October, at which abutters expressed concern about the new structure blocking a window in the neighboring property and about the zero-foot setback, although there were also supporters present. All of the concerns raised related to the party wall of the property, there were no other comments about the design. Our office received 12 form letters of support, which have been forwarded to the board. The Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association is the active civic group in this area, which is supportive of the proposal. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Sydney?
Counselor Flynn would like to go on record in opposition based off the presence of a roof deck. He understands there has been a good community process with the neighbors and would like to support the project. However, he has a longstanding policy against roof decks due to the impact of quality of life. Thank you.
Zach? Can you hear testimony? Zach? Okay, I see, I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes, so just the one thing to Counselor Flynn's recommendation. It seems like Counselor Flynn's proposal, or actually his opposition rather, is pretty straightforward and flat-out with every single roof deck on here itself. I personally, you know, would like, you know, Counselor Flynn to reconsider based upon the project and its merits. It's very consistent with the neighborhood and considering the support that we do have on record for it as well.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion of approval with review from the planning department.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Next, we have case BOA 1599326 with the address of 46 High Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. And good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Colty Miller, and Hanley at 28 State Street in Boston. I am here with the owner and proponent, Don Hughes, as well as our project architect, Tanya Carrier from KDI. If I may, Madam Chair, I'd like to take you through the beginning of this presentation and then just have Tanya quickly go through the project plans for you. So this development, if you can go to the next slide, Madam Ambassador. The project site at 46 High Street is a oversized lot in the 3F 2000 zone in the Charlestown neighborhood, just one building off from the corner of Green and High Street. And you will see the building in this aerial view where the red dot is. It is that attached section. It is attached, it is a brownstone that is attached to an abutting condo building in this photo to its right, which is 44. And to the left is 5052 High Street, which is also a condominium building. And then just to the side, to the south, is Memorial Hall, which is a long-existing veterans and social organization of great history in this section of the neighborhood. And then if you look in the back, this is important to our presentation, there is a shared right-of-way that goes in towards the back of the site. Being High Street and where this is, there is a pretty significant change in grade from the front of the site, which is High Street, down towards the rear of about 13 feet. Next slide, please. So you can see in context the as-built conditions a little better here, as I mentioned. If you look at the plan left here, you will see the existing 44 High Street is the Brownstown Row House that is connected with the shared party wall to 44 High Street, which runs along the entirety of our rear lot, which is now open. The lot is about a little over 12,000 square feet in this section of the 3F 2000, so significantly larger. The existing structure is a five-unit residential building, so it's a non-conforming use and a non-conforming structure with an abundance of underutilized land that is not in great condition now. And we are looking to integrate as part of a new development, which you will see the beginning concept of on the right. And that is to retain and restore this, the existing brownstone with an addition mostly at its rear that has responsive setbacks to the as-built conditions around us, significant open space, and allows for the conversion from five units to eight units of residential housing in the combined development with eight parking spaces that would be accessed off that shared right-of-way that I showed you and that you'll see on a plan right. This is intended to be a condominium homeownership development. And next slide, I'll take you to the zoning. The, this is a, go to the next slide, Madam Ambassador. Again, the site itself. We have worked very, very carefully over the last two years with our direct abutters. We are pleased to have the support of Memorial Hall. I know they're on. And we've worked very hard with our two abutting condominium associations, especially 44 High Street, which we share a party wall with. And so this is really reflective in the zoning, reasonable and appropriate considering the non-conformities that exist today and the need for housing. We do need variance for the use. Again, we're in the three-family 2000. It is a non-conformity already. And of course, it's much larger than that. So that relief is justified by that. And obviously, the need for homeownership done in a way which we're very proud of that complies with all setbacks. The front, side, and rear yard is compliant. The F A R as well. We are slightly under the allowed F A R at 1.99 in a two. So very much in scale. What we do need relief for in addition for the dimensional is the building height. What is allowed is 35 feet and three and a half stories. The existing building is non-conforming. It's 51 feet, 10 inches, 10 and a half inches approximately. And we are retaining that height. Obviously, we're keeping the existing building, but the addition would be no higher than that. And the addition goes towards the rear where there's a 13-foot drop in grade to mitigate and support it. Also, four stories in a three-and-a-half-story zone. The usable open space is de minimis with respect to what is required. We have approximately 300, I'm sorry, 3,819 square feet of open space. What is required is 4,556, so it's a delta of about 15%. And in this code section, we're able to only use a portion for roof decks. But if you included that, it would actually be. But if you included that, it would actually be in excess. And finally, the parking, Madam Chair. 14 spaces would be required. There is a balance that needs to be struck in this neighborhood. Some folks in the process thought we should have less. We have one-to-one parking, and that still requires a variance. But for this homeownership, family-sized housing, we think that is appropriate. And I will say that we are pleased to have the recommendation of approval from the BPD Board. This matter was deferred three times. First time was deferred in order to address the BPDA's recommendation that was then changed to be in support. And so what we did, and what you'll see, is we reduced the unit density from nine to eight. We reduced the parking from nine to eight, and we increased the open space and we increased further setbacks in excess of what is required in the zoning code in response to the as-built conditions for our abutters. And as a result of that, I am pleased that we have come to terms with certain agreements to work together with our neighbors and of course, the support of Memorial Hall, which we're very proud and appreciative of. With that, I will hand it off to Tanya to take you quickly through the plans. Tanya?
Great. Good afternoon. Tanya Carrier from KDI Architects. You can go to the next slide, please. A couple... Just go on. So just to walk you through the existing conditions briefly. Our building, as it sits today, is a four-story building with five dwelling units. It's around 7,101 square feet. Next. And just a couple aerial views, which I think Joe already explained. But we did take great detail to work with our abutters on our proposed massing, window alignments, materials, and other items that you see to preserve privacy and views for both sides of the project. Next. And just a photo of the front of our building with that historic character, which we want to completely preserve and restore. Next. And I won't read through all of this, but just a brief summary of some of the revisions we made. As Joe mentioned, we decreased from nine to eight units. We changed multiple setbacks, notably the front setback. We pushed back quite far from the street, which you'll see in the rendering. And we revised floor plans, window layouts, parking, open space as well. Next. And here is our proposed site plan. So you can see our parking is accessed off of that right-of-way in the back from Green Street. So it would be hidden behind the building. We'd be removing the existing curb cut that's currently there in the front, providing a landscaped front yard, where we've set our addition quite far back from the street in order to preserve that main massing of the existing building and also to preserve the views of the abutter to the right side there. Our parking layout, we have eight spaces. Three would be surface... Or six would be surface, three of which are covered by the building above, and then two garage spaces. Next. And this was just a diagram we prepared showing kind of our setbacks to our abutters and how we responded to their existing window locations to provide greater setbacks at those areas and to really push the addition back towards 14 Green Street, which is Memorial Hall, which is actually a blank brick wall, so there's no privacy concerns at that wall area. Next. And as far as our unit mix, we are proposing, as Joe mentioned, family-sized units, four two-bedrooms and four three-bedrooms, so we have different types of units. One is a triplex style. There are multiple flat style. And every unit does have some outdoor space, whether it be a balcony, yard area, or roof area attached to its unit. And we have a mix of unit sizes ranging from 1,077 square feet up until 2,600 square feet for different types of families. Next. And our proposed elevations. What we wanted to do was preserve the character of the existing building and create an addition that responds to that character while not overwhelming the detail of the existing building and really highlighting that. So we've used a little bit simpler materials and windows on our building while keeping the same proportions and general style. Next. And here's a view from the front. So you can see our proposed addition has been set back substantially from the street with a nice paved walkway and landscaping elements such as a flowering tree, different trevories, and continuing that iron fence along the front. And then on the existing building, it's really unchanged besides refurbishing what is there. Next. And our right-side view. So this would be the view from the abutter at 5052, if the building wasn't there, just so you could see what our building looks like. And then what we did with this is, you can see, we preserved the main portion of the existing building by setting the addition beyond the brick mass. And we've also worked with angling the windows to preserve privacy into all the bedrooms of the abutters. We worked closely with them on all of the window patterns and styles. And we've done a mixture of boarding batton and lap siding to kind of have a light material next to the brick. Next. And just a couple more brief slides. In the back, what we've done is stepped down actually two stories from the front. So the back half is a three-story area with the parking below it, so that the height more relates to the abutters' existing height. And we provided a landscape buffer on the right side there. For the abutter, it was one of their requests. We actually flipped the parking at one point. Next. And just a better view of that right side. We also worked with keeping minimal windows on the side for privacy, adding multiple plantings, screenings for both sides of the property. And next. That's the last slide, just a height diagram showing how we do fit in with that surrounding structure with stepping our building down to a three-story addition in the back versus matching the existing building height throughout. Created more in scale would be the back half of the property. Next.
Yeah, thank you, Tanya. And just briefly, Madam Chair, just to correct. I misspoke when I went through the zoning chart. I think I said 12,000 square feet of land. The lot size is 9,021 square feet, again in the 3F 2000, which is about 4 and 1/2 times the size. So just wanted to correct that, and thank you. I'll hand it back to you, Madam Chair.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none. Madam Public Testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sean Breen with the MERS Office of Neighborhood Services. An abutters meeting was held for 46 High Street last year. It was well-attended. At that meeting, abutters expressed concerns of potentially adding multiple ties to the area whilst a privacy to direct the abutters and lack of space between the proposed project and the abutting properties. Since that time, this office has received eight letters in opposition reflecting those concerns, one of which was from the 44 High Street Condo Trust, representing nine condo owners, which emphasize concerns regarding the sewer system under 46 High. The proponent has also met with the Charlestown Neighborhood Council and Charlestown Preservation Society. Both of these groups originally sent in letters of opposition, making note of the historical nature of the original structure at 46 High and the proposals conflicts with the urban design guidelines set forth by Plan Charlestown. Both have updated their letters since, being made aware of the BPDA's recommendations with the Neighborhood Council requesting a denial and the Charlestown Preservation Society suggesting denial with prejudice. Also, about an hour ago, the 45 High... Sorry, 44 High Street Condo Trust reached out to this office, requesting a deferral on judgment from the board while they work on a memorandum of understanding with the developer. With that, we would defer our judgment to the board.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Paro from Council for Polis, the abutters office. The council appreciates the advocacy from the community and the proponents' robust modifications to the project. We urge this board to align its decision with the newly qualified zoning on their Plan Charlestown enacted within the past year. This framework was designed to guide decisions like today's and to support sustainable growth while preserving the historic character of targeted areas. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Minor?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board. Minor Paro is representing the carpenters union. Would like to go on record in support.
Joseph? Can we get a good testimony here?
So we are moving forward. Good morning. My name is Joseph Ante. I'm the president of the Abraham Lincoln Post, and we are but the proposed construction site. And we're... Our plans that have been presented, I think the area behind was been run down. Vegetation is run rampant, and we've on a number of occasions had to evict derelicts and dip down with... We prefer to see this developed, and we're fully supportive of what the parents presented.
Okay, and then, yeah. See, Counselor Murphy's office?
Hello and good afternoon, Madam Ambassador, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Kevin O'Sullivan. I'm from Councilor Aaron Murphy's office. Counselor Murphy is in support of this project, especially for the project's efforts to work with the community and revise the project based on community feedback. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. I hope everyone has a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional raised hands at the moment. Thank you. Can the applicant address some of the concerns raised by ONS?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Sean and ONS for helping guide us through this process. We've been at it for two years now. This is our... We deferred three times. And we have come to terms with an MOU with our direct abutter at 44 High Street and essentially accepted the final terms earlier this morning. We've all been working hard on it. A lot of these issues pertain to shared infrastructure along the property line, which we have already committed to. And we remain working together with those neighbors. There's no reason that we wouldn't have assigned MOU. It's just, I think, you know, getting everyone together at the same point. I'd like to also thank Memorial Hall, here at Abraham Lincoln Post, who we worked very hard with, as well as the folks at 50 and 52 High Street, who were in opposition and who are not on today because of the work that we did together. The second piece, I would say, Plan Charlestown. We started this process in April of 2023. Obviously, very aware of that process. And I think if you look at the recommendation of approval from the planning department, it speaks to how this project now even better aligns with Plan Charlestown based on all the work that was put in, modifications. And at the end of the day, Madam Chair, you have an oversized lot in a residential neighborhood that will provide family-sized homeownership with great improvements to the site in the open space, its stormwater retention, its shared infrastructure in a way that is consistent with the scale and doesn't require FAR relief and complies with all setbacks and keeps the datum of the existing height of this building with an addition that steps down into a grade of 13 feet in change from the front to the back. So all of those things considered, we would suggest support the grant of relief. And you have my word and our commitment that we will continue to work with our direct abutters, as we have in the past two years, to finalize our agreement and also work through design review, which is an important component for the BPDA moving forward.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA designer review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Weimann?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have a rehearing scheduled for noon time. This is case BOA 1667121 with the address of 106 Webster Street. Attorney Spitz?
Madam Court. I'm on your hearing, accused. This is Attorney Richard Lenz. I'm on this one.
Okay, so, sorry, Mr. Collins is accusing himself, so we are a six-member board.
Understood. Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Richard Lenz with the business address of 245 Sumner Street. He's Boston on behalf of the petitioner. With me is Chris Drew and James Christopher from 686 Architects, who are the architects on this project. And Madam Chair, the board may remember, this was before the board in early December for some modifications that were made to the building. I do have a brief overview to make sure that the record is clear for the board. As part of that hearing, the board ultimately voted to not grant the requested relief. And we think there was certainly some information that the board did not have at the time and certainly an error that the Boston Planning Department had included in its recommendation. Just by way of very brief back... I know it's late in the day, and I want to make sure we get through this as quickly as possible. But the board granted relief back in around 2017 to allow the original petitioner to construct a multifamily eight-unit residential dwelling at four stories with seven parking spaces and roof decks. Within that plan, roof decks were accessed by headhouses. I do have copies of the original approved plans here, as well as the as-built condition. After the project was approved, the property was ultimately... The project was sold off to another builder, and various general contractors and other owners were involved over the years. Unfortunately, the project hit a number of snags, COVID not being released a which, and the property ended up in foreclosure. As a result, the property was partially completed and laid vacant for quite some time, landing it on the city's Problem Property Task Force. The current owner ultimately ended up purchasing the property at foreclosure with the effort to finish and complete the project at their expense. And seeing that 686 Architects were involved with the original plans, although not involved with the construction, the current owner re-engaged with 686 Architects to review the plans themselves and certainly the as-built conditions at the time and to the extent that the project was already built. When 686 had gone through that, they determined that there were some modifications made specifically with respect to the roof decks and the roof. The original plan did call for two private roof decks with headhouses. The as-built condition reflected not only the two private roof decks, but a common roof deck, as well as some finished space within the headhouse that would have added to usable space above the upper level. In noticing that, 686 rightly directed the petitioner to submit for an amendment to the building permit to ensure that the modifications could comply. Again, this petitioner came to this project as a foreclosure buyer, sort of took on the existing conditions that were built by the prior contractor and attempted to finish those and went through the process. As a result, there was some back and forth with ISD over finding the original plans and certainly trying to understand what the differences were. But 686 was able to provide a lot of that information to ISD. In an effort to try to bring this property to completion, however, 686 understood that there would be a process for final approval with ISD and more importantly, a review by the Boston Planning Department of the modifications because this project was subject to designer review. They did have a communication with ISD and Deputy Commissioner and were given permission to proceed, provided that the BPDA had an opportunity to review this. Ultimately, Madam Chair, the BPDA Urban Design Team did sign off on the modifications, and I think for good reason. As this board is well aware, East Boston has had a rezoning effort that was completed back in April of 2024. This project was approved under prior zoning. And as a result, there were certain items that relief was required for, including floater area ratio and overall building height. When the amendment was submitted and done so diligently by Six Eight Six at the time they were re-engaged with this project, the prior zoning still applied. Ironically, had they applied for their building permit after, or the amendment to the building permit after April of twenty twenty-four, the larger issues that were cited in the refusal letter would likely not even be an issue anymore. First and foremost is FAR. This is now located in EBR three subdistrict. There is no FAR requirement any longer. That was eliminated through the amendments to Article fifty-three. So had that amendment been filed after April versus filed when Six Eight Six realized that there were some modifications, that in and of itself would no longer be a violation. The second item was building height. The building height that was approved was four stories with headhouses. And therefore, under the prior zoning, the headhouses themselves did not cap towards the overall building height, although the structure was permitted and authorized to be there. Had the building been completed with the headhouses as is and an amendment to the permit was filed after April, horizontal expansion of the building is also now allowed under Article fifty-three, provided that you don't exceed the actual overall existing building height or make any of the setbacks any more non-conformant. In both instances, those would have been met or at least we've been able to meet the requirements under the amended Article fifty-three. So our position is, the changes, although the modifications were made and they were done so by the prior contractor and not consistent with the original decision, the critical factors here are the zoning code has been amended and that the Boston Planning Department has in fact agreed and allowed for this change. I think in December, I think the board's recommendation that was before it indicated that the Boston Planning Department recommended denial. However, the updated and corrected recommendation that is before the board actually reflects approval. I don't know if we've lost Mr. Hampton, and I apologize for going on as long as I did. But I think that is the crux of the issue that's before the board today. And we're hoping that perhaps Mr. Hampton can also clarify that.
He may have jumped off, but
No, I'm here, Madam Chair.
Oh, good. Thank.
Thank God.
Yeah, thank God.
Thank God, right?
Please assist.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeffy Anton, City of Boston Planning Department. I am not going to argue with anything that Attorney Lenz has said. The only issue at hand right now for us from the planning department, not the urban design department, from the planning department, is that ISD cited this project for non-compliance with already approved plans that were stamped in. I agree with, you know, Attorney Lenz, and I know I have spoken with Mr. Christopher in the past about this. We're not holding anybody on this call accountable for what has happened. However, our recommendation was based without any discussion with urban design or anybody from Six Eight Six that they came in and had new plans reviewed by urban design. Because usually, we go through the zoning process first and then through urban design. So our recommendation to the board at the time was for denial because, not knowing what had happened, we are not in the business of forgiving developers to simply build above what was approved by not only the board, but our urban design department. With that being said, I think it would look incredibly bad if the city of Boston told somebody they had to tear down a brand-new building. So we are shoring up our processes in this in this agency's department about how plans get stamped. If urban design or the planning department knows that something has to go back to the Board of Appeal, we're not going to stamp those plans until that happens. But we're also not going to stand by and let somebody tear down a brand-new building that is in move-in condition. So this is a very rare, if not the rarest occasion where the city's planning department will support the new stamped plans, even though it is in violation of what was originally planned. I think there was some miscommunication. It's not a process that we want to continue. And I think that it's, you know, very important that, you know, property owners, especially those who've undergone city regulatory approvals, they're held accountable for building something that was not approved not only by the board, but by the city's planning department. So I would like to go on record for the city's planning department and support the stamped plans that were done and to approve this hearing, to approve this zoning relief.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton.
Madam Chair, I just may add one additional. Thank you, Mr. Hampton, for providing that color to this. We agree, you know, Six Eight Six, my office, would do enough in the city to understand that this is not something that is the norm or should be the norm for developers. We feel that this particular client comes to this with clean hands by buying it in foreclosure to try to rescue it off of the city's problem property task force list and did so. Project is essentially completed with a temporary CO subject to this only open item. But I do want to stress that had this, from a timing standpoint, East Boston is in a somewhat of a unique situation with its new amended zoning. From a timing standpoint, this may have been approached simply as a board final arbiter because the necessity for addition or relief would have been eliminated with the amendments to Article fifty-three for the two, I'd say the two critical items that are cited by ISD in the refusal letter, and that is building height and FAR. So I just want to make sure that that's clear for the record as well. But this, although is requesting variances, it's because it was filed under the original or the prior version of Article fifty-three. But the new Article fifty-three actually cleans up a lot of this anyhow. So just wanted to make sure that's clear.
Thank you. Questions from the board? I'll take public testimony.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office had to defer to the judgment of the board. As previously testified, this had gone through a public process when it was first, a community process, excuse me, when it was first approved back in two thousand seventeen. Afterwards, as you heard, the building fell into disrepair and was abandoned as it changed hands several times. Office of Neighborhood Services received several complaints over the years regarding the condition of that property before the new ownership group took over and renovated the building. Our office is unaware of any specific concerns from direct abutters. We do want to acknowledge, though, that there has been concerns expressed by the Orient, no, excuse me, the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association, which expressed a strong desire for the applicant to meet with them. With that, I'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Parra from Councilor Polisapata's office. At this time, the council would like to go on the position of this project. Thank you.
Sorry, Madam Chair, we have no additional ways to ask.
Madam Chair, if I could just respond to Mr. Newman's point. We did reach out to the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association since the last hearing. And as we said, this has gone through a fully vetted community process. We did request to present this to JPNA. Their scheduling seemed to not permit us to get before them in a prompt manner. There were some questions about whether or not they even had sufficient board members to continue. So we're happy to go back and continue presenting this to give them the update and the information. But we did make that effort after the last hearing as well. So just make that clear as well.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
I have two questions. So when the applicant discovered that they did exceed the height, did they explore any mitigation to bring it down or explore avenues for that? And then my second question is, since there is a CO, are people living in the building?
So with respect to the first part of your question, as we will, the building height to the headhouse was authorized under the original approval. It was the expansion of that headhouse to allow for additional square footage to be included. So the height itself pretty much remains as to what was originally approved. It was the volume that was permitted in the headhouse. And as I mentioned, that volume expansion would actually be permitted under Article fifty-three as amended because it would not trigger any FAR requirements that no longer exist. As to people living, yes, a temporary CO. And again, I was not involved with the process of the sellout or the acquisition simply hired since the last hearing. There are units that have closed on a temporary CO for this building. Again, I know that's not the city's problem or the Board of Appeal's problem, but that has occurred, so there are people occupying units in this building.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is a complicated case, but I agree with the planning department about where things are in not making this developer the most efficient building. So we'd like to make a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Leinam?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wuwo?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Fair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And to those who celebrate, Happy Lunar New Year. That would be me, but anyway, Happy Lunar New Year.
Happy Lunar New Year.
Happy Lunar New Year.